Fine. All right. So this is the March 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is the chair. Staff tonight is Bruce Loughran and Deb Jones. We'll also be joined by the town attorney Rich Cody and our code enforcement officer Tom Zanarini later on in the meeting. There is the opportunity to address the commission under public communications. You'll have to raise your virtual hand and then you'll be allowed to speak.
Okay, so I'll call the Town of Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call. Looks like everyone is present. Next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have March 8th minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th. Is there a second?
I would second that. Oh, sorry, whoever.
Moving second, does anyone have any corrections to the minutes? No one has any? I don't have any. During, since we have none, then we'll we'll vote on the on the motion to approve the minutes of March 8th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next, we have public communications. We have the one that was attached to the original agenda. Plus, I think there are four others that came out today. Does anyone on the on the commission have any communications to report? The staff have any?
I just, I just want to note that since the agenda packet went out, you did receive communication, another communication from Bill Grant, one from Michael Boucher, one from Richard Fitzgerald, from Dawn Fine, from Michelle McCollin Green, from the Grotton Conservation Advocates, and Liz Ray's back. And those were all sent out to you between when we posted the agenda and tonight.
Is anyone?
Thank you. We did receive. Yeah.
Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
Yes. Yes. All right. So first up is Mary Ellen Furlong. Mary Ellen Furlong?
He's still showing his muted.
Yeah.
Unmute. Have you got me on?
There you go. There you go. Yes.
Sorry, I was explaining that I'm using my wife's, my wife's computer and it has her name on it. That's why it doesn't say Jim Furlong, which who is myself. I don't believe Grotton has a zone.
Record, would you identify your name and address?
My name is Jim Furlong. If you are O N G, I live at 57 Fish Town.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't believe that Grotton has a zone for data centers, either in the category of light or heavy industry. But I'm told that Grotton's zoning official has said that a data center would fit into current zoning definitions. Questions. Can the Town of Grotton's Planning and Zoning Commission appeal the zoning officials' position? Can it simply override the zoning commissions, the zoning officials' position in complex and large cases? If so, I suggest it should challenge, win, and handle the Flanders Road case as it sees fit. If the issue is in doubt legally or some other factor intervenes, I recommend the commission declare a moratorium that would allow our expert commissioners to deal with a situation that was sprung on them from an outside source. It is my hope that the Flanders Road case will never reach this commission. The town council should reject it. If it doesn't reject it, my belief is that the host fee agreement will collapse into lawsuits from Grot space as soon as it is approved. But it's better to prepare as the town attorney Eric Callahan has said, the people behind the Grotton data centers are quote, pretty litigious individuals, unquote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Genevieve Surf.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, dear commission members, I'm still suffering from a little brain fog. I caught Omicron and a pulmonary embolism. So I'm planning on writing you a letter.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Oh, Genevieve Surf, 6 Pearl Street, Mystic. So I'm going to make a brief statement because I'm actually preparing a letter with some articles and references. I do have a PhD in electrical engineering, so I spent my entire life in data centers. Even at the beginning of the internet, when a data center was really only a computer in a couple of universities and at Bolt Berenek Newman in Boston. It was about six or seven universities. That was the internet. So a data center can go from being a simple computer. I could, I could make my computer a data center to what they've become now, which is basically these increasingly gigantic buildings which house computers with denser and denser microelectronics. And they're operating at these, as you know from just your phone, monstrous speeds, therefore generating a lot of heat, requiring a lot of cooling, requiring a lot of backup generators, as you may have heard in some of them, if you listen to some of the comments from people who testified at the public hearing. These generators are not only very noisy at quite a distance even, but they also use diesel fuel, which has been shown to be quite toxic to people. And as someone with pretty bad respiratory problems right now and asthma, I, I can vouch for the fact that you really cannot put one of these things anywhere near a residence. Some of the people on Flanders Road who live there now and people who live on Hazelnot Hill on the other side would be extremely affected by both the noise and the, and the pollution from the generators. Now, there are a lot of smaller data centers, which are fine. I know there are Summit Pfizer, probably some Electric Boat. You know, it's all a question of scale. In this particular case, what's happening? And it's been happening for, I have a wonderful article I'm going to send you. It's been happening since 2012. The really huge data gobblers, Facebook, Amazon, Apple, Google, have been using these proxies or developer types to go out and do their dirty work for them ahead of time. In other words, they approach the municipality, they try to pull the wool over the, over the heads of the municipalities commissioners to try to get them to accept these huge tax breaks and accept these monstrous buildings. And once they have their foot in it, once the camel has his nose under the tent, in other words, a data center gets it, plants its first shovel into the ground, there's almost nothing you can do to stop them after that. I will send you this article out of Forbes, which is really an eye opener. And you have to remember that a company like Amazon, which is, I think, probably has the highest market cap of any company in the world, hardly pays any taxes at all, even to the federal government. And now here they come to Grotton, if it's them or Google or whatever, and they want hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax breaks. This is so completely corrupt that it just defies description. So there's the, there's the issue of the residents and there's the issue of the fact that these people are up to no good. And it won't do us any good because aside from constructing a data center, which they'll probably do in about a year or so, because they do, they go really fast, because they really need these. It will only leave, you know, maybe between 20 and 50 permanent jobs. And some of this, in this Forbes article, you'll see that for each of these permanent jobs, the tax is losing out on a million or $2 million worth of taxes. So it's really not worth it to say nothing of the fact that they want a 20 or 30 year lease. And I can tell you as a professional in the business, I also worked for Verizon for 23 years. As at the time I started working for Verizon, they had the biggest and the most data centers probably in the country because these other companies didn't exist. And I saw Verizon go from a completely analog plant with copper wires from your house to the central office and analog switches. You could hear it when you went into building all these wonderful little clicking sounds as if it was rain falling to a completely, completely digital plant. All the old data centers were completely stripped, torn down and sold. And all these completely new things came into place. So if you gave them a 20 or 30 year lease, you have absolutely no idea what they're going to do in 10 years from now, even, even five years to probably 10 years from now. And you're stuck with an obligation for 20 or 30 years, which you don't even know the details of. And, and you know, we haven't even applied any experts. The least we can do is hire a couple of people like, you know, somebody like me who does know about data centers to try to sort out what's behind the curtain here. We don't just give away the town just like that. Anyway, I've spoken enough about that. If you do take up the, are you going to take up the short term rental thing also? Shortly, because I think people are asking about that. Yes?
Well, we still have it as an action item.
Okay, so that's not for this time. I can say something next time when I have a better voice.
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks a lot for your patience and I hope you manage to sort your way through this. But this data center one is really a no brainer. You just can't allow them near residences, any, anywhere near residents. They should be in the middle of absolutely nowhere.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ian Thomas.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I'd like to line my remarks with, oh, first off, Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive in Grotton. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to align my remarks with those who have spoken before me. I'm not going to reiterate what they've said. I agree with all those points. Moreover, I just want to kind of highlight the fact that if you go through the documents on, on what exists so far with the proposal, you'll know that the engineering that NE Edge are coming from the same engineering firm. Can anybody else hear that?
No.
Minute. Cannot hear that. The date. You just may need. Yeah. On those presentations are May of 2021, which is seven months before NE Edge was incorporated as an LLC. So there is definitely something not quite right there. So I would advise extreme caution. And yeah, so long story short, I believe there's a lot of legal ethical concerns. Hello, can you, hello, 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 hello.
We can hear you.
Oh. And I think he's gone.
I think he's gone.
Let's see, next is Catherine Pratt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Catherine Pratt and I live at 75 Front Street. Chair Pritchard and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to raise some concerns about the proposed host municipality fee agreement between the Town of Grotton and NE Edge LLC to build data centers on a parcel of land that abuts the Sheep Farm and Sheep Farm South open space properties and also borders residential neighborhoods. Although no plan is before you, a conceptual sketch provided by NE Edge shows three buildings, one of which is very close to the property line between the data center parcel and the Sheep Farm South conservation land owned by Grotton Open Spaces Association. As stated by Gosa President Joan Smith, quote, "The Sheep Farm South parcel is significant for its wildlife habitat and connectivity to other parcels for wildlife migration. It is also important for the protection of Fort Hill Brook, which runs through the property and flows down into Monford Cove and Long Island Sound," unquote. At the March 16th public meeting on the proposed host fee agreement with NE Edge, Ms. Smith explained that absent a feat of engineering, the massive regrading necessary to build data centers on the hilly terrain and the runoff from the building's massive roofs would cause pollution of the overland and underground water flow, nearby reservoirs, Fort Hill Brook, and Long Island Sound. The southernmost data center, a parking lot and access roads would be in plain view from Sheep Farm South. It is logical to expect that hikers and other visitors would hear the noise coming from the building. The Sheep Farm's pristine wildlife habitat and its quiet enjoyment by the people would be impaired. Among the stated purposes of the Town of Grotton zoning regulations are, quote, "Promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community," unquote, end quote, "Exercising reasonable consideration for restoration and protection of the ecosystem and habitat of Long Island Sound," unquote. By diminishing the recreational value of the Sheep Farm and its role in water filtration and flood control for vulnerable areas downstream, the proposed data center would be at odds with these goals. It would also utterly destroy the peaceful character of the surrounding semi-rural neighborhoods. Residents would be subjected to polluted air from diesel generators, incessant noise, and the eyesores created by sprawling concrete buildings up to six acres in size. At the Town Council Committee of the Whole on March 30th, 2021, Councillor Obree asked the town manager if the properties anticipated for the data centers were appropriately zoned. Mr. Burt replied that data centers were in allowed use for those industrial areas. Now, a year later, after one host fee agreement has already been signed and with a second one on the table, we learned that data centers may not have been contemplated in the zoning regulations and permitting them in these locations is a matter for discussion and debate. It is a sad commentary that the experienced members of the Planning and Zoning Commission were not immediately consulted when the first town, when the town first sought to place a data center in an IM zone. The Sheep Farm and Sheep Farm South are an essential part of what makes Grotton a beautiful place. They are priceless assets to the town and the neighborhoods around them. It would be seriously shortsighted to allow the desecration of these local treasures for the sake of a corporate welfare tax giveaway development scheme cooked up in back rooms by the state and lobbied into law by the data center promoters. The payments in lieu of taxes to the town specified in the host agreement are a small fraction of what the actual real and personal property taxes on a taxable and taxed data center would be. I support the suggestion of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Kevin Fiftell to place a moratorium on data center projects. This would give the commission time to consider how best to balance the town zoning regulations relative to this potential unforeseen use against the mandate to protect our common woodlands and waters and the rights of our communities. Thank you for the careful attention you are giving to review this matter.
Thank you. Right, let's see, John B Davis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Thank you. I might be talking during the raw.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, my name is John Davis, 198 Shore Avenue in Grotton. I can't really see the agenda right now, how it's organized. I wanted to speak, if allowed, about short term rentals. Is there a later section to do that?
No, this is the only set.
Okay. Okay.
Probably can address the commission.
Thank you. So I've been working for about three years. I live in Grotton City, but of course I'm also part of Grotton. And I'm here asking for your help or attention to the issue. I believe the city is taking a posture of kind of sitting way back and, and might be more interested in others taking the lead. That's why I'm here as opposed to, let's say, at a city meeting tonight or last night.
We can't, we have no jurisdiction over the city for zoning.
Right. What I, what I mean by that is being the larger or sort of the leading entity for Grotton, the thing called Grotton. My read, having lived here about seven years or so now, is that the Town of Grotton has a lot of, if you will, big brother and big sister influence. I'm not saying you have any, you know, day to day jurisdiction. But I think you already having drafted this proposed short term rental regulation or whatever it was called ordinance, I think you already showed that you're, you're trying to lead the way and address a pressing issue for everybody in Grotton. So I'm just trying to address this issue for Grotton as a whole. Should I, can I continue?
Oh, yes. Yes.
My understanding, I think it's really simple. And I'm amazed that we pay so much attention to zoning rules, regulations, laws, sometimes, and then other times pretend outwardly that they don't exist. So what I mean is, in general, commercial businesses in residential zones aren't allowed. That's a generalization. In terms of lodging, one of the few exceptions tends to be bed and breakfast, and then that's addressed. But in general, commercial activities, businesses like a gas station or a drive through, et cetera, aren't allowed. It's, it's, it's in the regs. Things that are not addressed are not allowed. My contention is that short term rentals that I think are harmful to the town are not allowed and that we all, if you will, collectively have been looking the other way. I think it sort of makes a mockery of the process that we are very exacting about planning and zoning rules and requirements. Sometimes, and then other times, it seems to be treated as irrelevant. And I don't, I don't think that's fair. My personal concern is living next door to and across the street from, et cetera, short term rentals. One diagonal from me on, I think it's Airbnb advertises that they sleep 15. That's a, that's a boutique hotel. That's not renting a room in your house. I I applaud the town for doing the draft, the short term rental draft, perhaps a few months ago was a meeting. And I don't remember which of you, but I do remember one or two of you P and Z, town P and Z members got up and shared your concern about not being involved in the process. So I'm here to applaud that, support that. I think commercial activities and residential zones deserve the leadership and the attention of planning and zoning board or committee. So thank you, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, Zell Stever.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Zell Stever. I live at 81 Main Street in Grotton. I've come before you for, to speak on two matters. One, which I've spoken to you about before, is the feasibility study that's being conducted by the State of Connecticut, Department of Transportation. I can report to you that that study has now begun. The state has hired some four different contracting engineering firms to, to do this analysis. It's on a expedited schedule with a report due back to the General Assembly, that is the State Connecticut General Assembly, by January 1. Part of that is to expand Shoreline East to Rhode Island. The other part is to establish a brand new branch line from Grotton, New London to Norwich. And the part that most concerned would be, most concerned to you would be the potential establishment of a new train station in downtown Grotton. And so as this goes forward, the contractors and the state will be in touch with town political group and our town manager and our town council. And I expect they'll be in touch with Planning Department and potentially with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I bring this to your attention. This is, has started. And they're off on a running start. And so I hope you'll support this going forward. I think it's a great opportunity for development in in Grotton and in southeastern Connecticut. And so my second concern is, as I have come before you before, to ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission of Grotton consider redesignating the mixed town center to become a transit oriented zone, mixed use town center. And I say that again because I see it's not on the list of the memorandum that you received regarding the proposed direction or preliminary discussions on what might be new zoning text amendments. And so I bring it to your attention that I think that is important. Throughout the discussion that was held yesterday with the, with the Steering Committee, TOD was repeatedly brought up and I can't help but think this is, will be very important for Grotton to be on the right side of that equation. And I realize it may be a chicken and egg issue, but let's not throw the hen house out. And let's see if we can move that forward. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Right, let's see. Stephanie Kerr.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name is Stephanie Kerr and I own and live on 6 Ashby Street in Mystic. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm speaking today because I passionately believe that a proliferation of short term rentals will harm Mystic. We must act now to ideally eliminate the use of short term rental properties in Mystic and at a minimum heavily regulate this industry that may end up being a parasite for our lovely town. I first had the opportunity to come to Grotton when the Navy sent me in 2008. I immediately fell in love with its New England charm and knew one day I wanted to call its home. The town reminded me fondly of where I grew up on Isle of Palms, which is a small Navy town in Charleston, South Carolina. Growing up, it was a very small community with many military retirees, school teachers, artists, raising their families and looking out for one another. Many of my friends' parents and even grandparents grew up together. Some even fought in World War II together. Everybody knew everybody. When the naval base closed in the early 90s, Charleston rebranded itself as the tourist destination to create more jobs. Unfortunately, the influx of investors building second homes and short term rentals end up driving up the locals further into town such that the those who did have a job at Charleston could not afford to live there. Over the span of 15 years, I witnessed my home turn, hometown turn into one with monolithic box homes hosting rotating out of state cars every week. Property prices and taxes went up and drove out all the permanent residents. First, as retirees passed away, their homes were demolished. Then middle income families were forced out because they could no longer afford to live there. Today, very few teachers, firemen, restaurant servers, and others can afford to live in the community and must commute upwards of an hour to work each day. Lastly, a vast majority of the homes on Isle of Palms are second homes or property rentals being managed by Realtor offices. Many of these Realtor officers also had representation on Many of these Realtor officers also have representation on county town council, removing barriers to entry and ensuring laws remain in their favor. I share this background with you because I'm fearful of what I'm starting to see in our town, primarily the number of short term rentals. What exactly is this doing to support the community? If I've learned anything during the pandemic, it is how wonderfully supportive our community and neighbors have been for each other. That support has helped keep our downtown restaurants and businesses open through the hardest times when no tourists were visiting. By allowing for short term rentals to remain legal and proliferate, we'll be attracting people into our community, buying up homes only to flip or rent them as short term rentals. With no sense of community here. This will make it unaffordable for current residents to remain and driveway families looking for a place with a sense of community. Between the strategic submarine base, electric boats contracts to manufacture submarines, Pfizer's offices and Foxwoods and Mohican casinos. Mystic and the surrounding towns here are built to survive without surviving on a proliferated short term rental economy. I implore you to put forward a ban of short term rentals in the town of Groton. I worry if swift action is not taken, we will lose that New England charm and community that makes us so special. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Right, Bruce McDermott.
Hi, good evening. Uh I'd like to address a couple of subjects. I'm down here in Florida until another three weeks or so, but I read the day. Every day. And uh. I'm just concerned that. The uh.
Would you stay your?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Address.
Jeff, Bruce McDermott, three, two, eight, Noank Road. With with regard to the data center, there's just so many questions involved. And really not answered, certainly not to my satisfaction. I don't know about the council or you guys. But I think uh if possible. We need to just put a hold on this thing entirely until we can figure out what's going on. But I don't believe. Uh I can't speak to the uh how how efficient this data center is going to be. I certainly don't want to see taxes go by the wayside for fees. Um but my main concern is we don't get embroiled again. As we did with the Mystic Oral Center with people that have a sort of sketchy reputation and have had legal problems before. It never ends well with developers. I've been there before in business several times, so I can speak with. Some truth to that. The other uh thing I'd like to address are the STRs, short term rentals. Are you, are you folks aware that uh Ledger has put some regulations into effect as of December? They're very well written. And um I can, I'll read you a couple of them, just just so that you have an idea. An STR use must be essentially invisible to the neighborhood, not create a nuisance, i.e. noise. Not be detrimental to the aesthetic quality of the residence or its neighborhood, not interfere with the quality of life in the neighborhood. And that's the key. And there are other aspects to these uh regulations that they've put forth that are pretty good. I really don't think that uh STRs belong in Groton unless their owner occupied. So there's some break on what goes on. Uh I have personally seen residences sell for much more money than they are praised or worth. Because somebody can buy one and immediately turn it in into a profit making operation. That's not a good sign. So I am kind of unalterably opposed to short term rentals unless an owner sits on that property. And uh can uh sort of manage what's going on. And that is certainly something we need in in town because our taxes are going up. A lot of people could use that extra income. So that's my take on short term rentals, and I hope that uh. You will uh if if I'm not mistaken, am I correct in assuming and. Deb, I think you told me this once, that the council has to also act commensurately with the planning and zoning. Otherwise, anything that you folks do is just going to be uh not retroactive. It will just be going forward.
I don't know. Zoning regulations are not retroactive.
Yeah, right, okay. So, thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll be visiting that topic again.
And thank you. Right, Elizabeth Raceback.
I'm gonna be short because I think I can't talk very well tonight. My name's Elizabeth Raceback. I live at eighty-one Main Street. I'm also co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates, that troublesome organization. Um I just wanted to point out to uh that PNC, what we see are the big issues that are. Probably going to come your way uh from the data center. First is runoff. According to Groton Open Space Association, that data center roof and paving for fourteen acres would generate. Approximately five hundred and ten thousand gallons of stormwater runoff with a one inch rain. And as you know, that says next to the sheep farm in Sheep Farm South. And one of the three buildings that's recently shown up on Mr. Quinn's map is right up against Sheep Farm South. And um the wetlands and streams uh from the. Uh data center property kind of joining with its streams of sheep farm and uh Ford Ford Hill Brook. It's a very important ecological property area. Um another issue, as you heard, is uh noise and our problem. Uh one of our problems here is we have no noise ordinance. I commend to you the uh testimony of um. Lynn Marshall, who is a PhD health just who testified before the town council. She spent her career. Uh in the Navy um working on uh noise management for sailors on. Air Force carriers, etc., protecting their hearing. She knows a great deal about this. And it's very clear that we don't have that expertise on our staff. I mean, this is the problem with the data center. We need to have serious expertise in areas we don't in order to make intelligent decision. Uh not their air key areas, air pollution. And frankly, I'm not, it's not clear to me what jurisdiction you have over air pollution, but uh. We have presented to the council the important fact that. Running these generators during peak energy use times, this is what, this is what whoever the company is, Google or whoever comes in here. They're going to want to go off the grid during peak energy use times, hot summer days. And just run their their thirty fifty generator, polluting generators twenty-four seven to say, my. This should not be allowed. Uh it's going to cause severe um health problems in the neighborhood. And definitely going to uh damage Groton's air quality. Connecticut already is a non attainment area. And if we. Have one or more data centers significantly increasing our air pollution. The federal EPA is going to come in here and restrict everybody going to tell Electric Boat and Pfizer, they have to produce less. Air pollution. And there are big employers. The data center is going to have thirty guys on the shift. So air pollution is something that we need to become much more educated on and figure out what solution is. And then finally, the fourth big issue, of course, is energy consumption. We really are looking at a black box as to how much energy. Uh that as to whether Groton Utilities has the capacity to serve the five megawatts. Energy for the aid center without doing damage to the rest of the town and putting the rest of us in a brownout. It's another place that town really needs to have some expertise and to force GU to share information. So those are what I see, what we see. It's the four big ones coming at you and um. It'll be interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right. Jeff Kerr.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Jeff Kerr, I'm at six Ashby Street in Mystic. My wife Stephanie just uh spoke a few moments ago. Uh just also wanted to address the uh the committee about uh short term rentals. And uh kind of just reiterate some of the points that my wife made along with John Davis and Bruce McDermott on the call. Listen, I think our our neighborhood here. Specifically the folks who are actually living here full time are getting pretty concerned about these short term rentals. There's a couple of houses that have recently sold. And our immediate vicinity that um sold for. Uh pretty high prices and the folks are from out of state and really have no intention of ever living here. And turning some. Properties that are really kind of not even designed for residential use as Airbnb residences. So. Kind of to to John's point earlier, um you know, I I think there, to some extent, this is kind of a little bit of. A camel's nose that kind of is over time slowly kind of. Uh snuck its way in, and it needs to be something that's that's at a at a minimum regulated if. Uh pretty significantly and kind of some big. Big uh consequences if not regulating or or even considering banning. The use of short term rentals is that, first of all, you're probably going to end up driving some long term residents out. Because as these properties sell for higher and higher evaluations, it's going to drive up property taxes for everybody. Folks that live on a short term, a fixed income probably aren't going to be able to afford to deliver their homes anymore. Um the other issue to consider is that a lot of the folks that are staying at these short term rentals are. They're using our local resources like roads, bridges and services, and that's just going to continue to add an additional tax burden on our full time residents. Without really. You know, as of now, you're not, they're the folks that are staying at these rentals and the people that own them aren't necessarily. Fully uh paying for the burden that they're they're putting on the town. Um. And the only, the one thing I would invite you guys to consider is that a lot of the business that's going to be brought in by these. These short term rentals are probably going to be seasonal, so it's really not a whole lot of long term jobs that. This is necessarily bringing to the area. Um and I think a good compromise is something along the lines of what. Bruce McDermott was talking about about uh looking at the the recent ledger legislation, or you could you could even look at what New York City did, which basically mandates that. If you're going to have an Airbnb or a VRBO or some kind of short term rental, um you have to live there. And if you don't, you're more or less a hotel. Which means that you're falling under the regulations of of a hotel um. And should be regulated accordingly. Um so anyway, I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks for um listening to me and. We'll definitely be staying engaged on this issue. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, uh let's see, Ian Thomas. Oh, nope, sorry, George Davis.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Uh my name is George Davis, uh no relation to John Davis, and I live at seven gravel street, unit one in Mystic. I'm here tonight to express my opinion regarding short term rentals. To be clear, I'm talking about commercially run short term rental properties in residential areas, specifically in the Mystic Historic District. Short term rentals are a land use issue that is growing by leaps and bounds. Right now, it is a free for all. No one knows how many of them there are or where they are. And there are more than what you think they are. Let's be clear, these are commercial, I won't call them hotels, motels. Owned by corporations, not mom and pops. Operating in residential districts. In fact, they are worse than motels. They do not have onsite management, supervision, standards or controls. On my block, which is Pearl Street down to Cliff Street and all of gravel street, there are thirty-six homes. At least twelve of which are now short term rental. That's thirty percent of the neighborhood. Almost all of them become short term rentals in the last three years. I have the unfortunate fate to live next door to a high volume short term rental. To make matters worse, the only way to get to the parking area behind the houses is by where of a shared, long, narrow cobblestone driveway. And that driveway runs three feet away from the right side of my house. At nine gravel street, which is the home next door, they rent two units totaling four bedrooms. Sometimes only eight people show up. Many times fifteen people show up. They don't care what restrictions are listed online or posted on the wall of the building. They don't care about trespassing on your property. At nine gravel street next door, over the last two years, and these are COVID years. More than sixteen hundred guests and eight hundred distinct cars and trucks have come and gone. We counted them. Every one of those cars and trucks had to rumble by my bedroom window, sometimes multiple times a day, sometimes all the hours of the day and night. The neighborhood disruption due to sheer volume congestion of people and cars is bad enough in a residential area. But the real problems start when the partying begins. It falls to the neighbors to enforce the rules or call the police. Since twenty nineteen, the investment group which owns nine gravel street has purchased five more single family homes in Mystic. And is operating them as short term rental. The new owners just down the street at thirteen gravel street turned their basement into a short term rental with no off street parking. At eight pearl street, which now identifies itself as the Mystic Bridge Inn. It sleeps sixteen people. Overflow cars park on the street. Sometimes that street is gravel street. A house has a fire pit, which we've asked them not to use because some neighbors have severe asthma, but they still do. If the smoke gets bad enough, we call the fire department and they come in and put the fire out. Ten pearl street, which is next to eight grid. April street. Had their grand list assessment increased by fifty-three percent this year. Because eight pearl seat sold for twice its value. There was a bidding war for the property and it was purchased by a group of Chinese investors, so it could be turned into a short term rental. Twenty-six pearl street is building additionally to their shack, as they call it. That's the place where they rent out their house and two garages for short term rentals. Overflow parking is on the street. Demand for short term rentals and the associated bidding wars are artificially pushing up neighborhood grand list assessments. The assessment on seven gravel street where I live went up twenty-two percent this year. Not only does no, not only does no one want to buy a house next to a short term rental, they can't afford it. I don't feel that a person who owns a house in a residential district has the right to turn that property into a commercial enterprise. Defining the established zoning regulations and turning the neighborhood upside down and using my driveway to do it. My preference is to be like Ledger. Put in guardrails with proper enforcement in place to control short term rentals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Right, Ian Thomas.
Uh thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh Ian Thomas, twenty-four Jefferson Drive. Um so yeah, I I'd like to align my remarks with the those who have spoken before me in regards to the. Short term rentals, uh Bruce McDermott and the gentleman who just spoke as well. I think owner occupied is a good way to go. Uh should look into that. But that aside, the main issue for my uh comments tonight have to do with the data centers and. Uh the NE Edge deal in particular, and also like data centers at large in the town. Um. There are a number of concerns in regards to environmental, legal. There are a number of concerns in regards to environmental, legal, ethical, financial, as well as health based concerns. I definitely would encourage anyone who has not yet watched the March sixteenth town council meeting where there's public comment, but there is a number of people speaking there. And also the March first town council meeting. So I'm not going to belabor or reiterate those points. From my own particular point of view, going through the paperwork, reviewing the host fee agreement drafts and the state bill that the public act twenty one dash one, which used to be House Bill six, five, one, four. Looking at those items, there's a number of concerns as far as like the tax exemptions and how broad they are in regards to stocks, bonds, derivatives. And other such things like that. And but most particular of concern to me was the fact that looking at any edges proposed site map that they submitted with with one of their host fee agreement drafts. It is made by the same engineering firm that was that did got spaces. Site maps. And if you go on got spaces website, they have identified got Grotton North and Grotton South. And the Grotton South location is the exact same location as the any edge location. And if you look at the two site map mark mockups. The only difference is about ninety degrees rotation. And if you look at the dates of production of these site maps. The God space ones were produced in February of twenty twenty one and the any edges that they gave was in May of twenty twenty one. And while that seems innocuous at first, it's important to note that any edge was not incorporated until December fourteenth of twenty twenty one. So I find it a little incredulous that a an LLC could hire an engineering firm to do a mockup of their site map. Seven months before that LLC existed. So um, that and many other concerns that everyone else has already enumerated earlier tonight. So I definitely encourage you all to review the March first meeting town council and March sixteenth meeting. And all the public comments that were given. And I would also encourage you, if you have it anywhere on your radar screen, to consider a moratorium on data centers until such time that we can get a better sense of how to regulate these unique items, or even if we want them at all in our town. I would encourage you to do so to issue that moratorium. And I'll send an email along with some of the documents that I found to follow up on this, so you guys can see what I'm I've been looking at. Thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing the deliberation later on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tom Bradham.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Pritchett and members of the commission. My name is Tom Bradham. I live at seven gravel street in Mystic. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the commission this evening. And normally I know you realize that my speech is exciting and thrilling, but tonight it's going to be boring. So and it's not going to be anything commissioners don't know. So I'm going to warn you about it now. But I wanted to get these remarks on the record because I wrote them about two years ago and never put them on record. But when I noted in the agenda packet this evening that you'll be discussing short term rentals, I decided I would remind the members of the commission of the town councils public hearing on STRs last winter. If you recall, at that meeting, numerous citizens voiced their opposition to STRs in residential neighborhoods of Grotton and conveyed examples of the resulting harm to their family's quality of life. Many residents also expressed their opinion that these STRs violate the town zoning laws and that commercial enterprises are offering transit lodging facilities and residentially zone districts. Let's review the zoning regulations and determine why these residents feel this way. And rest assured, I'm not going to read all funder pages of the regulations to you. But as you well know, section four of the regulations is the table of permitted uses. Section four one states that quote, land, water and buildings can be used only for the purposes set forth in the table of permitted uses. And only within those districts specified in the said table of permitted uses unquote. Short term rentals are not named anywhere in the table of permitted uses. Therefore, a reasonable person can assume it is not a permissible use of any dwelling. However, further in section four point one, the text indicates, and I paraphrase here. Where a use is not specifically listed in the table, its status under this section shall be determined by reference to that limit listed use, if any. Which is so like the use in question in purpose, function, character and effect as to be substantially similar. So what listed use is similar to STRs? Is it residential health slash institutional? Is it residential household living? Or is it perhaps residential lodging? Residential lodging includes bed and breakfast and hotel motel. These are forms of transit lodging as our short term rentals. I vote for residential lodging. Are residential lodging uses permitted in the RS and our residential districts where most of our neighborhoods exist on the zoning map? That would be no. Therefore, one can assume that STRs being transient lodging, subject to the state of Connecticut's occupancy tax, just like the hotels and motels. Should not be allowed in the vast majority of Grotton's residential districts. STRs should of course be welcomed with open arms in the town's commercial mixed use districts as permitted in the use table. To clear, to further clarify why I choose residential lodging as my choice for the determination of where to place STRs on the use table, I refer you to section one point three of the regulations provisions and requirements. And I quote, in the event that there are found to be conflicting requirements within these regulations. The most restrictive regulations should be applied. And finally, section nine dot two dash one dot A. Quote, these regulations shall be enforced by the planning and zoning commission. Acting by and through the zoning official. Commissioners, it is the authority provided to you by chapter one twenty four of the general statutes of the state of Connecticut. That permits you to interpret and enforce the current regulations and protect the residents of the town of Grot. Specifically, chapter one twenty four, section eight dash three E states, and I quote. The zoning commission shall provide for the manner in which the zoning regulations shall be enforced unquote. I urge you to do the right thing. Thank you for listening and for your volunteer service to the town. As always, thank you. Good evening.
Right, I think Kristen Earls.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thanks. Good evening, Chairman, the members of the Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm a Grotton resident, an environmentalist and businesswoman, and a strong supporter of sustainable economic development in Grotton. I understand this commission may
Say your name and address, please.
Sorry, yes, Kristen Earls, one forty four Brook Street, Grotton. I'm a Grotton resident, an environmentalist and businesswoman, and a strong supporter of sustainable economic development in Grotton. I understand this commission may or may not be following the community conversation regarding data centers. Centered on the any edge host municipality fee agreement currently under consideration by the town council. Or have detailed knowledge of the data center host municipality fee agreement between Gotten and got space data partners LLC executed last spring. For those who have, you may have observed that this is a complex and much analyzed asset class. Its local promises debated, but among its impacts mainly cautionary tales abound. Simply Google data centers and Forbes, Time Magazine, the Washington Post, the New York Times, even industry media and many others. Your colleagues in the town council have heard overwhelmingly from the community whose collective messages slow down, get educated and lends any project or potential zoning update through the town's codified principles and guidelines. Specifically, only a few months ago, the town council passed by a margin of eight to one a resolution of commitment to address climate change for all actions of the town government. Stating in the resolution, by taking action now, we will lessen the cost and severity of anticipated climate change impacts in future generations. Grotten is committed to becoming a leader in combating climate change, lowering our carbon footprint, reducing injury and illness. And improving our quality of life. Grotton will consider these guidelines to be central to all aspects of town governance and operations. Importantly, much of the community conversation on this issue also advocates for sustainable economic development opportunities in our town. Just not unexamined ones. So far in this process, there has been extraordinary volume of citizen supplied content expertise, personal accounts. From lauded career Navy audiologists and accomplished business people to Flanders and Hazlitt Hill neighbors and attorneys who have spent countless hours conducting due diligence research on the topic and the potential legal risks for rotten regarding this particular proposal under consideration. As well as the agreement executed last spring. I would encourage this commission to review or request a neighborly walkthrough of the information shared thus far. And recognize that the opportunity is now to step back, listen to the data and collaborate with your colleagues in the town council to pause the push for data centers. So that reasonable and responsible due diligence can be conducted. I appreciate your service and the opportunity to share my preliminary thoughts with you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty one gravel street.
Oh, this is Brian Carroll. Can you, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, Deb. This is Brian Carroll on twenty one gravel street. Hello, members of the commission and thank you for your service and time listening to our neighborhood needs tonight. I just want to comment on the Airbnb and short term rental issues that we're discussing. Being on twenty one gravel street, I bought two such properties that are Airbnb and short term rental. And I guess it makes me wonder, am I in a neighborhood or I'm in a tourist zone full of hotels? Very, very simple. I moved here from Massachusetts and I thought I was moving into a neighborhood. I've been here for ten years and I don't know my neighbors anymore. So I don't have any neighbors. It's as simple as that. Having short term rental properties, it's a revolving door. We find ourselves having disruptions, bonfires, smoke. Loud parties. And if you think these houses that are for rent are going downtown and helping to populate the commerce of Main Street Mystic, you're mistaken. They're in their house having house parties. They're not spreading their money in town. They're not making the city have a reputation outside the area. It's become a party hill. Now, we're not in a younger college way yet. We're sort of in a older population that's doing the parties, but sooner or later, it's going to come down to late night college parties. I kind of see that within the years coming as I view different people renting out both houses. And it makes me wonder how this thing is going to progress in a negative manner. Forget parking, just forget it. You cannot park anywhere around gravel or pearl. And a lot of it is when somebody rents, it's four or five cars at a time. I like the idea of the owner occupied. But I would caution you that I believe the owner square footage should be bigger than what they allot to their rental. Else you're going to have what I see here, owners and little shacks in the backyard, renting out their giant properties upfront and you have it mismatched. So I would caution you, if you do go down the owner occupied restriction, I would just ask that the owner square footage be equal or greater than what they rent out. Or else you're setting up a situation where they're setting up shacks in their backyard, which is what I see here on Pro Street. So that's all I have to say. I love the neighborhood. I think it's a charming place. I've enjoyed coming down here from Massachusetts and being a part of the community. But I like to have neighbors. I think that makes the town strong. I think it makes the community, a community makes us work with the small businesses that are in this area, support them, help a vibrant economy. And I think that's the way that a community should grow. The short term stuff, you're losing tax revenue, you're losing people that aren't coming into town and buying stuff. I don't know. I don't see it as a long term solution for the town. So I have to say, thank you very much for listening to me and I hope that you take some action on this. I like to have a little bit of a quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, green.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Thank you. Good evening, planning zoning commission members. I appreciate your time listening to everyone speak tonight. I am a Flanders Road resident and I'm reaching out preemptively to you regarding concerns about the qualified data center development. I know the agreement hasn't come your way and it's not in your lap at this moment, but I'm reading, I did submit my statement to you earlier by email. So I think everybody has it. I'm not sure if anybody has a chance to read it or not, but I'd like to speak it out loud to get it on the record. So I believe a data center is the wrong choice of development for this area. Its proximity to homes, which would be exposed to substantial noise, light and diesel pollution seems an unfair burden for this neighborhood to bear. Not only would our property values decrease, our ability to enjoy our properties would as well. Many of us have lived here for decades. Many of us have existing health challenges that would be exacerbated by living with pollution from the data center. The property in question was owned industrial or light industrial, I'm not sure, many years ago. Before the houses built up around it. I wonder, would the commission still zone it as industrial if it was assessed today? Surrounded by the homes. In addition, I have concerns regarding vague texts and definitions in the qualified data center host municipality fee agreement. I feel are too broad to adequately protect nearby residents. Many times the agreement references planning and zoning commission and its noise consultants responsibilities. So I'm bringing my concerns before you today. Because regardless of whether it's on your table as of now, you are referenced in the agreement over and over. Currently, there is no noise ordinance in the town of Grotton. So my concern is what noise pollution standard will the data center be held to? The agreement states that the town of Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission could impose stricter requirements than the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Regulations. Would the commission be willing to do that for its residents? The agreement states that the target noise to be measured and controlled shall be no more than the road decibel noise from Interstate ninety five. Adjacent to the Grotton properties. Unless otherwise approved and or required by the Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. But it doesn't address the pitched levels. A Zoom participant at the March sixteenth town council meeting suggested that the noise from the data center would have to fall below the level of ninety five. Or it would double the noise pollution in our neighborhood. Is that correct? I feel it's very important to note that the noise from ninety five that can be heard in our neighborhood is hardly twenty four seven. The only time the noise from ninety five is noticeable is when there are emergency vehicles and possibly during high commute times. But the data center noise will be twenty four seven and will be even worse when they run their diesel generators. In the agreement. Northeast Edge consultant will be the one responsible for establishing preexisting levels of background noise. Creating the design goals to achieve a standard and measuring post construction levels to determine if they meet that standard. I strongly feel this is a conflict of interest since the developer who is paying their consultant stands to financially benefit from certain results. Will the town of Grotton employ our own board certified noise control engineer to approve their sound monitoring protocol? Observe the developers Observe the developer's sound monitoring process and participate in determining what the standard of acceptable noise pollution will be? The agreement states, the town, in consultation with its consultants, shall determine if the final acoustical design report complies with the approved plan. Will Groton have a certified noise control engineer perform this heavy decision? The agreement gives Northeast Edge forty days after receiving their certificate of occupancy to measure the sound produced to ensure compliance with the developed standard. Again, the developer's consultant would be performing, performing the measurements. How is this not a conflict of interest? What assurance do our residents have that this would be legitimate? Why is the developer's consultant, who works for the company, the one determining if they must spend more money on corrective work? The backwards part of this is, they won't know if they can meet the developed standard until the building is already built. It's too late by then. Will the Town of Groton consultant be there advocating for the residents? The agreement goes on to state that if operations are expanded over time, or if they add more air conditioning, generators, or other equipment, that upon completion of those expansions, they must provide documentation reasonably acceptable to the town to display continued compliance. Again, by that time, if they aren't in compliance, it's too late. But what does reasonably acceptable documentation even mean? After any addition, Northeast Edge should be required to measure and report as they did after they received their initial certificate of occupancy, so the town of Groton may ensure that they are always in compliance. Not being specific and consistent about required noise measuring and reporting gives them a leeway to continue to add to the noise pollution. I don't like the statement in the agreement on page nine that says, "Failure to substantially comply with this section," the noise control section, "shall be deemed a material breach of the agreement." What does substantially comply mean? Who gets to decide what that means legally? The worst part is, as I interpret the agreement, the only remedy if Northeast Edge becomes non-compliant with the developed standard noise level is for the Town of Groton to terminate the agreement. If the developer doesn't correct non-compliance within sixty days, or unless during such period, Northeast Edge has taken remedial steps, the effect of which would enable Northeast Edge to cure such events of default within a reasonable period of time. Who gets to decide what within a reasonable period of time for correction of non-compliance is? That's not defined in the agreement. I'm on my last page. Thank you for bearing with me. Once the building is there and operating, they know the town won't terminate the agreement. The Town of Groton has no leverage to enforce compliance with any noise standard established. Might the town add to the agreement substantial cumulative fines until the violation is corrected? The wording of how they must establish, meet, monitor, report, and correct noise levels is so loose, it allows room for them to debate, delay, excuse, and ongoing violations that the neighbors will be suffering through. It's just not protective enough. Additionally, I would like to know why they are not being required to use the least polluting generators for backup power. On page four of the agreement, they propose using EPA Tier Two diesel generators instead of Tier Four for power outages. Why should they not be held to the highest standard for all the generators? Can they be required to use the most efficient, least pollutive generators available at the time of construction since there may be improvements in efficiency from now until then? Lastly, on page ten of the agreement, Northeast Edge has agreed to, during blasting operations, maintain bonding and insurance in order to repair any damaged wells and foundations in the vicinity of the Groton properties. Such vicinity to be confirmed by the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. How will the commission determine which properties are within the protected vicinity? Why would subject tanks not be protected as well? As a resident who will be directly impacted by this development, and as a mother who must explain to her children why the adults are not prioritizing protecting the environment over money for their future, even though they say they care about it. I am requesting that the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission issue a moratorium on data centers in Groton until and unless effective, appropriate, and research and science-based regulations and standards, including realistic and effective remedies against noise, light, and environmental pollution, are put in place to protect Groton's current and future residents' health, peace, and environment. I thank you for your time and attention, and I know you have a tough job, and I appreciate all you do to protect the residents of Groton. That's what I wrote to you, but I now have a new question. If zoning regulations are not retroactive, if you could please clarify, where no noise ordinance exists now? The data center obviously presents a significant noise pollution issue that requires regulation. If the host fee agreement is approved by the town council, what position does that put the town, the commission in as far as setting standards if they don't already exist? So I'm reemphasizing my request for the commission to please issue a moratorium on the data center in Groton until the appropriate regulations and safety precautions are put in place for its residents. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, Sandra Maguire, I believe.
How many more people are there, Deb? Because we spent over an hour. We're not taking action on any of these items tonight.
I, I know, I know. I see one, two, three more hands, and they keep coming up. And we do have the town attorney who's been here throughout this, as well as the code enforcement officer. So, I, I mean, you have, you've got a couple of options. You can continue to.
I'd like to stop, stop this tonight and just request the people to send by email what their concerns are, which we will review, since we aren't taking action tonight.
Can I go ahead and talk since I was called on?
Yes.
All right, very good. Adam Maguire. I live at ten Pearl Street in Mystic. I'm on my.
You'll be the last, be the last speaker.
All right, very good. So yeah, I moved into this home in twenty-fourteen with my wife. At that time, we had full-time neighbors on all sides of us. Fast forward to now, we now have one remaining neighbor, which was George and Tom. They spoke earlier that are, they're at seven Gravel Street. Can, can confirm everything that they talked about as far as what's happening with short-term rentals around the neighborhood? Eight Pearl Street, which they went into some detail on. They are currently advertising as a Mystic River Inn. It was bought by an LLC. Immediately when it went up for sale, they converted that to an Airbnb. Currently listed as sleeps fifteen, can hold a ninety-nine-person party at that residence. And this week, they have been working on the third floor of that house all week, which I'm sure is to install more beds to have more capacity to have people over there. More concerning to me is, right after they bought that property, I was out in the backyard with my three-year-old son and realized they had installed a full security system at the house with cameras pointing directly into my backyard as I was playing with my son. So it's becoming a problem there. I have a revolving series of people going into that house, in and out, workers that I don't know with a very young son there. So it's concerning to me, especially all around. That's not the only house. As I said, I, I have one neighbor left, so I, I really think the, you know, the council, the commission, needs to take some action here. It needs to be serious. So we really can't wait on this. And I can, I can say anecdotally, you know, I, I moved into this house because I love the air. It's an absolutely beautiful area. I think we can all agree on that. It's, it's an incredible place to live, and I really enjoy it. When I first moved in here, I was just amazed by, you know, it's a beautiful historic place, very clean when I moved in, no garbage anywhere. And over the last couple of years, all these short-term rentals come in. You know, I take my dog for a walk every morning down Pearl Street, and I'm just amazed by the amount of garbage that's just lining the streets now from these people who are coming in and out of the houses and really not taking pride. And the owners of these houses who live here now, who, who take great pride in keeping their houses up, it's just not there anymore. So I appreciate you all listening to me. I do share the same concerns that everyone has expressed in the short-term rentals and very much hope that it's taken under advisement moving forward. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, Chairman, I was hoping to at least get the names of the people who, who had requested to speak so that we can, you know, at least know who they were.
There are only two more people signed up.
Why don't we just do it?
Are there only two more? Is that all?
There are, there are two more right now, so the rest of the folks who are here.
All right, if they've already raised their hands, why don't we, we'll take those last two.
And that's it. Okay, thank you.
We'll take the communications by email.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Susan Frew.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My husband and I bought the house.
Name and address, please.
Eleven Gravel Street, Susan Frew, F-R-E-W. My husband and I bought the house December seventh, nineteen ninety-four, so it's been twenty-eight years. And we've loved living there. My husband's an architect, and we've been rebuilding that house for several years. It's now fossil-free, free of any fossil fuels. And so we used to always come up on the weekend with our child, and we always used to go boating, and we loved it there. And it's ironic because at home for the past forty years in New Haven, Connecticut, I've been a Realtor, and I specialize in rentals. And, and it wasn't until two thousand and eighteen when my daughter decided to get married. She wanted to get married in Mystic. And we rented houses for her wedding to bring her, the in-laws and, and our relatives from Scotland. So we used to know our neighbors, but we don't really anymore. We are surrounded by short-term rentals. And I guess I talked to Tom today, and he said the state defines short-term rentals as anything less than thirty days. And in New Haven, short-term rental culturally is, there is three months. And we also have our buildings inspected, and we have licensure. We have a license for every building that we own in New Haven. And it's a safety issue that we feel strongly about. We have all our properties up to snuff. I'm not sure if people know how to inspect a building or to see if it's meets fire code or things like that. But it's getting to the point where you might want to look into the safety issues of short-term rentals. And it has changed drastically just since two thousand and eighteen. And we do love our neighbors. We even love the people that come from, from all over. We're, we're very nice to people that, you know, that come to Nine Gravel. Sometimes they smoke, you know, and my husband has had COVID, and he can't be near smoke. So we have to, we built another balcony so that we could have some outside space so that we didn't have to be near the smoke. So everybody kind of adapts, but I think it's a safety issue that you should be looking at when it comes to rentals. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Arno Bourgeois.
Hello, could you hear me, guys? Yes, very good. Good evening. My name is Arno Bourgeois. I live on thirteen Gravel Street. I've been there for a year and a half now. And I do have a STR in my basement. It's a very nice basement. I made it a very nice basement. It was not a nice basement before. We also own, my wife and I, another building in all Mystic. And that was part of the all Mystic Inn on the St. Lincoln side. And I want, as I've got the back building with six listing, short-term rental. And all of those, these things, by the way, don't have any kitchens. So all of our guests are going to town and spend a lot of money in town. We do totally understand the issue of homes who, where owners are not even in town, who are away from, you know, sometimes thousands of miles away. And I do believe that regulation should be written in the, in the sense that the neighbors are not affected by, you know, every other day party and owners not being there to stop it at the correct time, or not even being there, not knowing what's going on. I would like to know how, if, probably the commission is going to look at all of this. And are you going to try to speak to people who have STR? Because like the other person mentioned before, if forty percent of his street, or the last two streets around Gravel Street, are STR, I think it would be a good idea to meet with, with your committee and and, and people for it and people against it. And, and like, like I said, people who are, the people who own STR are not necessarily against regulation and, 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 and be good for the community. So that's it. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to everybody, by the way.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Then we can move on to our next business item, is all business on regulation amendments. We have the letter from you, Deb. I guess the best thing to do is just go down, talking about each one that's on the agenda. First one is short-term rentals. You think we should listen to the town attorney first?
Yeah, I do think so. I'd be.
Code enforcement and.
And Tom have, have waited for quite a while. So, so you, you have talked about short-term rentals in the past, and I know you've offered to work with the town council on coordinating a zoning regulation and an ordinance. And the last time we discussed this, you were somewhat concerned with the pace of, of the, or development of the ordinance and, and wanted to talk about just moving forward on your own with the zoning regulation. So I've asked Rich Cody, the town attorney, and Tom Danerini, our code enforcement officer, to join the discussion so that we can talk about what, what, what we might expect if, if you do decide to either regulate or prohibit short-term rentals in certain zones. As you've heard tonight, there are, there are a lot of short-term rentals in Groton currently operating. So I know Tom can speak to how he does enforcement and, and Rich can, can talk about what, what the implications are here with regards to the, the short-term rentals that already exist without ordinance.
So we want to hear, hear first from the town attorney.
I'm happy to talk about it. I didn't really prepare a presentation as much as I figured you'd have some questions I might answer. I can tell you generally, there's a difference in Connecticut between the, the use of the ordinance. there's a difference in Connecticut between the uh the use of the ordinance power, which would be by the town council and the use of the zoning power, which is which is within your jurisdiction uh with respect to singling out uses and then regulating them. Um, an ordinance can be retrospective and capture those kinds of uses that are already in existence. Uh, with respect to the zoning power, um, you, one of your primary restrictions is that when you create a uh prohibition or a a performance standard, it's not applicable to a use because that use will become non-conforming. Um, and so um, most attorneys that I'm aware of who are dealing with this, you know, the municipalities recommend the using the ordinance power, not the zoning power. Because uh particularly in towns like along the shoreline, you have a lot of existing short-term rentals uses. Once you define the use, uh, everything that fits within that definition that was in existence as a non-conforming use beforehand can continue legally. And the problems you have um identifying short-term rentals is the trying to inventory them and figure them out, figure out who is what and the uh it may overload the zoning board of appeals if there are cease and desist orders. And so those are some of the general concerns that the uh attorneys have with respect to uh advising zoning commissions on the exercise of that power. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well.
I have a question.
Chairman, this is Kevin. Can I ask?
Well, I I'd like to go around and just and ask each one minute. We have
Thank you.
I don't know if the why don't we just open it up that way and just go go around just down the list? And so everybody gets a chance to to say what their concerns are or what they want for objectives on the development of the individual regulations. So I'll go down, I'll create each one, set each subject separately. So we'll only talk about short-term rentals. Now just go down the list. So I'll start with you, Mike. I, we're getting some feedback. Somebody has a speaker.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I'll keep this. Um, I mean, I I don't feel as, I mean, we we tried, I think, a year and a half ago with the ordinance. I think it was a failure. Um, I I I don't believe that the town council is in a position to uh deal with this right now. And I it from what I'm hearing from the sixteen people, whoever many it was here, just spoke that this is a more urgent matter and that uh regardless of what the town council chooses to do, we still need to do something and I'm of the mind of, you know, just because it's difficult, doesn't mean that I shouldn't do it. And just sitting and waiting isn't an option for me at this point. That's all.
Okay. So you're really saying we should move this to the top?
I think we should move ahead with it. Yeah, that because uh, you know, whatever it is, end it, figure it out, make some regulations. And if and if it's a, you know, a shot across the bow of the town council that they need to do something, fine. And if they don't, I don't want to, you know, limit what I do because they aren't up to it. You know, it's not, this is a land use issue. I'm not like pointing fingers. This is a land use issue. We should be dealing with it. It's unfortunate that we can't deal with it in a more uh effective way, but that's that's where we're at.
Hal, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, here's my my question, actually. Um, so how how different is it? I I I get it that the town council isn't done. They've kind of had their hands full embroiled in other issues. But it's true there. It's a land use thing and that's what we're accustomed to doing. Um, is there an issue? I guess there's two parts. One is if we come up with something and say, here's what we're proposing in in a change that we would put forth. Um. And we have a package. How different is that from the ordinance that they would do? I mean, does us coming up with a package that we would like to have in the zoning and hand it over and say, here's what we're thinking? Which means we did your job, we're job for you. You just need to change, change the language to make it an ordinance? Could we push it through that way? So I don't think they're going to look at it. I don't think they're, I think they're looking for big businesses and data centers and apartment complexes and look at this giant great big images and all little stuff that we don't care anything about is what their job is. It's a land use thing and they're just thinking, well, it's it's our jobs and even writing things in to make it more our job. So maybe is there a way we can just do our job, do our part? As Mike says, we'll just write whatever, come up with what we'd like to do, but prior to doing it, hand it over and says we think this should be, this needs to be an ordinance.
Well. Yeah.
That's right. But but a pretty, pretty solid one. Does you don't figure anything we have here's here's the percentages. Here's the everything we want to come up with. We'll hash it out here. We'll have our hearings. We'll do whatever it is. And we can knock it off, I think fairly quickly. There aren't that many variables involved. And hand it over and now it's a very direct action or inaction on their part. Do they, here's what we say you should do. What are you doing? I want to meet about it and talk about it and hash it out. Now it's up to you. So my question might be if in fact they say, well, we're going to talk about and have a committee meeting and we'll get back to you next year. Is there a problem if we actually push through our changes? And so now we've got some some non-conforming uses. Is it, could they still come up with an ordinance and say, well, thank you, non-conforming uses, they're now not allowed? Can non-conforming uses be turned around and become just not permitted by ordinance?
What what I thought how was more likely here saying is that we should come up with a regulation. And because there are different areas in town, that the ordinance maybe should recognize that and say that it's that sections zoning regulation that would control the details for short-term rentals. So that, so that they wouldn't have a town-wide one because maybe in a beach area, they'd want to allow them. So you know, just have flexibility. Plus, the other concern, I think we have to worry about is that for the next few month, two months or so, the town council probably only has time to worry about the budget. Well, we can go off and develop something. So that once they're through with it, we, they'd have something to look at and either adopt it, like you say, or or we would use ours and the ordinance would just say you have to comply with the local existing zoning regulation.
Right.
Of that area.
As as we thought before, it would be a kind of, I think we need to be conjoined because you're right. We are, what we're going to do is not to say what what's true in the middle of Groton is not true of something on the beachfront. I mean, come on, it's there's a reality there is that we get it. But it would get to the idea that, oh, by the way, it's a hotel.
Yes.
It's not a house, somebody letting out, it's a hotel.
It's a business commercial.
It's a business and that's a different thing and it needs to be regulated and inspected and taxed and everything is different about that. And that would help, you know, attach somebody who just happens to have a two-car garage. They switched it made into two apartments and uh we need to find all those things. What is short-term? If somebody wants to rent it for a year, two one-car garages as apartments for the year, I think we're actually okay with that. It's a good use. Uh, but when it becomes less than thirty days or less than ninety days, that's a different thing. You can get that laid out for them because I don't think they're going anywhere.
No, I think you're right. Anything else, Hal or?
Did you have a question of our attorney?
No, I person by person. So Barbara's the next.
No, no, but no, but but the question, what you're saying is that I did have a question with attorney was that is there any conflict? If we come up with what we want to do and actually pass it, actually get it passed. Is that a problem with them coming up with an ordinance after the fact?
Well, it's going to depend, it's going to depend upon the tech. It will do, that will depend upon the text of what you're creating. Um, it's it in a vacuum, it's hard to answer that question, but there could be conflict between what you would regulate and how the council would regulate it by ordinance.
Well, the difference would be, I mean, I'm I'm actually kind of assuming that they wouldn't come up with anything that we wouldn't come up with. It's just that there's hopefully theirs would just reflect what we're saying right down to what the zones are. The difference would be what what we do would then print, would then make a whole bunch of uses non-conforming. Your ordinance would do would make them simply non-permitted. So
Or permitted, or they might make them permitted under certain circumstances.
Permit under circumstances, but would they be able to then make the say, do exactly what we can't do is to make it retroactive without any conflict? Or would we actually be shooting ourselves in the foot if we come up with something?
Well, then then the concern would be is that we would have the town attorney review review our proposal before we put it out for review for the public.
Well, yeah.
Well, I, you know, let's get moving on this. We've just talked it and talked it and talked it. And you know, I've just gotten really impatient with the I don't know, inability or or whatever it is that is making this drag on for so long. I feel so much compassion for the people on Gravel Street and and other parts of town. And we have to realize what our zoning can do. There's no Ang zoning. It's Groton Long Point zoning. The city of Groton won't be affected by this at all. So we're not going to solve a whole lot of problems. But we've got to start and we've got to, I don't know, embarrass the town council, if you will, into finally passing something. Uh, and the ordinance again would probably not affect the city of Groton. Uh, so
I'm sorry, this is Tom Danerini. If I can inter, if I can interject and to say that I feel like right now that the planning and zoning commission is is a dog chasing a car. What are you going to do with it when you catch it?
I have no idea what you mean. I have no idea what you mean, Mr. Danerini.
Point of what the whole discussion is, I don't think the planning and zoning commission understands wh- what enforcement you want to impose. So discuss that.
Cease and desist.
Our concern is to write the requirement down since it's been misunderstood. I think that's
There is a requirement. What are you trying to, what, I don't understand. As the person who would be doing this, I have no idea what you're even
Well, then you have, we would have to write it down first, maybe, and then you can see it. But there's obviously a difference but between a residence and a business. And I think that that legal case that was in that two, two week, two meetings ago in Massachusetts, very clearly defined short-term rentals and said they're not their
In Massachusetts.
Yes, and that's what we probably want to have something written down similar to what the judge had determined.
And then what?
Hmm, that's because
It's enforced just like any other zoning issue.
Yeah.
Then you can't
So any other zoning issue, I just wanted to wrap, I just want to let you wrap your heads around what that would entail. It would be not so dissimilar from the Spicer Mansion project where we've had a zoning infraction that's been three years in the making and we haven't had any conclusion to it. This is what you're getting at.
Well, we'll have to write down
Okay.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean that you don't do it. And this dog isn't willing to just sit on the porch. You know, I'll chase every car down the road. That's what you have to do.
As to Mr. Kane's point, and I will support Mr. Kane in this, this is Mr. Kane's point. I'm going to be getting calls on every Monday morning, on every Friday, Saturday party that goes on, and I can't do anything about it as to just level a zoning infraction and it's going to go on for months and months and months. These people that are in the neighborhoods want immediate reaction and what the planning and zoning commission can do cannot offer that. So I just want to
Oh.
let you
What you're saying.
Think about that.
No, but what what we can do is always just going
Now I
It's not, it's not looking back on what's already there. We can't fix that. That's something for the town to do. It's an ordinance to do. What we're talking about, what we can do is not permit them going forward. And that's easy to enforce.
Mr. Chairman.
You don't get an occupancy permit. You can't buy the house.
I like to just hear from each individual and not have a debate right now. Because we aren't, all we're gonna do is give give Deb direction on what we want to do. And then she's got to come back with the actual text that we can talk about. And maybe a workshop or something like that.
Right, right. Once you reach a consensus as to what you want to do, we'll we'll start to draft up something.
Right. And then we have something to talk about. Yes. So I, did you, did you have anything else to add, Barbara?
No, I just want to get moving on this.
Right, that's, that's all I want to do. Okay, Sue, do you have anything else to add or? Sue?
You're muted, Sue.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, I really think we should get going on this. Um, I hear it from so many people. Some people think that there's conflicts of interest because some people that are working on this have short-term rentals and it's just really, we need to do something and come up with something. I thought the um that lawsuit was very interesting because that's having gone, gone over the zoning regs and um revised them when I was on the zoning commission, um, that to me was very clear, the business versus commercial aspect of it. Um, so residential versus commercial and why are we um doing things that are impacting the big businesses in town? You've heard me talk about this before. Um, so I thi- I think also when we're doing this, when we're coming up with what we want to do here, the town council can and should attend the public hearings. I know on the zoning regulations, they always do. Um, they were very involved in it. So it's not like they would be a separate silo over there. They should be part of this as even we're going along and they can do that by attending these hearings. And whether or not we need an ordinance, I don't know yet, but I would really like to explore all possibilities, quite honestly. I feel very sorry for the people who um are residents in these commercial, now semi-commercial neighborhoods. Um, so anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, I just, um, I I know the position that a lot of the commissioners have taken about, um, you know, we can't enforce something retrospectively, but um that's on, that's going on the assumption that something doesn't exist right now in our own regulations that that regulates it. And that's um, you know, our current interpretation that has to be, you know, possibly clarified. But what happened in Noang was a similar situation. There were short-term rentals going on. And basically all they did was say, we've pretty much clarified um and reread our own regulations and oh, by the way, they're not allowed and anybody who has a violation, contact the zoning enforcement officer. So um, I I don't know if that can happen right now. I mean, it's, it appears that, you know, when that one person read our regulations to us, which we know what they say. Um, it to me is clear that they're not permitted. You cannot have a commercial uh business running in a residential neighborhood. So uh, you know, get the cease and desist going. And um, you know, if we need some more horsepower on this, that's when an ordinance takes place. So um, I'd like to hear from the attorney that um, you know, how much power does a cease and desist have beyond a zoning enforcement officer?
Um, well, the price cease and desist order is issued by the zoning official acting as your agent. And uh, it has to specify exactly what the violation is and what the legal grounds are. Uh, that can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals, uh, which would then uh hold a hearing on the uh, the complaint by the recipient of the order that um, that it was issued illegally or for for some illegal reason. So the process uh, is is one of an appeal to the ZBA and then from the ZBA, the party who's aggrieved, uh, say the person loses or the town loses can go to court and appeal that decision. So it can be a very slow process to i- if the order is challenged. If the order is not challenged, uh, and it becomes a final order, the the process then would be to uh, to to contact our office and ask us to um, to enforce the order judicially, which would require a lawsuit to go into court and uh, and seek an injunction. Which, as Tom mentioned, we we've done in uh, uh, you know, up on Elm Street with the uh, the bed and breakfast up there. That's that's the process with the cease and desist word. Ordinarily, they're not challenged, but if they are challenged, it can be a uh, a long process.
Okay.
Yeah, just and an ordinance gives us gets us the power to just involve the police, right?
Yeah, you don't an ordinance is forced differently. And it could be a civil nuisance, uh, but yeah, tickets, things along those lines, something with a little more uh, maybe a little more teeth.
That would be part of the ordinance.
Okay, um, yeah, I I I don't know exactly what we would write that, you know, with the exception of saying short term rentals are considered commercial um, operations and therefore by paragraph X Y Z are not permitted in residential zones in the following areas, you know, we can we can define it like that. But um, you know, I I don't know why we're not enforcing our own regulations and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay, Kevin?
Um, yeah, so similar to um, what Barbara and Sue said. I feel a lot of empathy for my fellow citizens and the people who came here today. Um, if we don't have some urgency behind it, um, we're wrong because it's time to start moving ahead. But as I listen to and having done a tremendous amount of big frameworks before within a government structure, um, I see as if someone always has to start the ball rolling, right? And um, we we know that the town council um, did start it. It seems to be at a standstill for the moment. So in from planning and zoning and understanding unless we get to an ordinance, you know, I think we've put um, the town enforcement um, official in a very um, tough position and long for the town. Has to go to an ordinance is that we, I think, is where Steve was going, is that we take a position that um, as planning and it's not gonna take us that long, we're not solving the world's problems again. We take a position that basically says that we do or do not believe that short term rentals based on our planning regulations either meet or not meet, and we hand that over to the town council. And we ask that they take action based on what we have stated out of our regulations. We ask that they take action. Um, and hopefully embracing an ordinance that comes out of what the decision that we make. So that's that's my idea, Sharon. Thank you.
So, Deb, do you have enough?
No, I don't. I don't. I'm hearing two different things here. I'm hearing some folks saying, let's develop some sort of regulation. Okay, which basically says where you allow these things and under what types of conditions. And then I'm hearing a couple of other folks say, let's look at the regulations. It's not in there, so clearly it's not allowed, but to do it the way Noang did. Um, I don't, Rich, you may know, I don't know whether or not any of the zoning officials have actually done a formal interpretation. Absent that, can this commission just say, look, it's not in here? Um, where it's not allowed um, and and move forward with that.
I I'm not aware of any decision myself.
Yeah, I think, yeah. So so if there is not one, um, we can, I guess we can request one. But again, I'm hearing two separate, I'm hearing two different tracks here from from the commission.
I'll go back to one quote that I believe Deb, either you or somebody else smart told me long, long time ago, and it was, it's called the table of permitted uses. And that means that everything in the table is permitted and by um, by inference, everything that's not listed is not permitted. We don't have to list every single thing in the world that you can't do. We've listed the things you can do. And that's why it's called that.
But there's also the interpretation clause at the zoning official who can make an interpretation if one use is if he considers it similar to one that is in the table.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear that then.
Yeah, where we got in trouble is that?
Now, I thought that's what had been made.
Yeah.
I I believe that you said that that has not been done, though.
I don't.
Sorry, I didn't hear hear your voice.
I froze. So I am, I have not seen an interpretation. It's possible that there is one from the past zoning official. Um, need to do some research on that. I don't know. Um, the current zoning official has not done any, has not issued any kind of interpretation.
Oh, so we have no interpretation.
I don't know.
Oh, well, maybe we should find that out. Would it make sense if if there is no interpretation? I mean, is that what we're supposed to have happen? I mean, we're supposed to rigorously apply that table? Because this is really the subject of the next item, same issue.
It is the same issue. That's right. I I mean, the table of of permitted uses are a list of uses. It's not every single conceivable use that you could have. Um, which is why there is the interpretation section here that allows the zoning official to make reasonable interpretations and that elf can be appealed as someone had noted earlier within a certain timeframe.
So if we disagree with that interpretation, we should go to ZBA?
Excuse me. Um, yeah, there is the ability to do that. There is, I believe you have to do it within thirty days of the issuance of the
We can go both ways. I know it makes, because it seems like the low hanging fruit is to just say, we we don't think it's allowed at all, period. It's probably too stringent because it's probably not a problem in a lot of places. We've got a lot of locations that we wouldn't mind permitting it. So there's the it's kind of a two step thing. So maybe the first step is it's not allowed, kind of like what we're kind of trying to step in doing with that with cannabis, say, we'll start with not allowed. And then we'll figure out what it is, and that's where we get into the details of how we wanna change the zoning.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good place to start for the next meeting. And will give us time to go over the regulations again and think about the ordinance and everything. I think everybody be pretty well prepared and maybe we could get beyond the first part there at least to find it somewhat.
And maybe we can learn if there was a formal decision that was made. And then we'll have a better better way to move forward.
Well, if there is none, then like, yeah.
Well, it it then by saying not, then it allows us to think about it. And maybe we wanna limit the time or the the number of days or whatever it is that we wanna do. I don't know. And and how it can be done in a in a way that's fair to everyone or as many people as we can make it fair to. But it buys us time. And then there's no new ones coming on in the interim. Hopefully.
And not asking.
Well, when I know that Deb, you said on the, when people call into the office and they ask, and then you say, we have no regulations. And so then that's you know, that that's that's uh, but there are, not regarding those, but there are regulations for, you know, sing for residential neighborhoods.
Historically, that when someone has called um, to ask about whether the town regulates short term rentals, the answer has been, no, we don't regulate short term rentals. Um, that originated with zoning official and 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 that's that's been what um, folks are told. Um, of course, over the last year and a half, it's been, you know, what I tell you right now might not be the case in a month, but so, all right, so let me do a bit of research to see if any zoning officials have ever issued any kind of interpretation. Um, and absent that, um, we'll talk about drafting up regulations um, to determine, to to discuss what zones these would be allowed and and under what conditions. Again, that that will only be from the effective, if you if it is it would be from the effective.
And maybe just to keep it simple, just what the the basic rules are and not worry about putting it into a text that you would insert into the regulation until everybody agrees.
Yeah, sure.
To make it simple.
Prevent us. That doesn't prevent us from going back to the town council and say, we've made our interpretation as far as this is concerned. We believe that this is only the first step, right? In that we need you to embrace whether we go to an ordinance or not. At the same time, we've made that, right? We can go to the town council and and give them a letter or state that very clearly.
Yeah, that might really put it down though, so.
I just think we need we we need a proposal that we can hack. That's, I think, all we're saying, first step, right?
And we'll say, and here here is the here's the model of your ordinance. Here's here's the ramifications of there you go.
Okay, so I'm not going to put a lot of effort into actually drafting, which, but I'll 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 do some bullet points of just sort of a consensus and a discussion item, okay?
And then maybe we can get a consensus.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
Get the dartboard out.
Maybe. Okay.
All right, then we can move on to uh, data centers.
Yeah, so at at the end of the last meeting, um, under a report of commission, um, you folks started talking about uh, data centers. A couple of you had been to some of the public meetings. Um, and so there was some discussion about um, how whether whether they're allowed. Um, and I'd noted that the zoning official had made a determination in writing uh, last year, I believe it was. Um, saying that they are a use, it is a use that is allowed in the IM zone, um, and he issued in writing. Um, so so as part of your discussion, um, from what I recall, you were talking about either regulating data centers, um, maybe instituting a moratorium until you could come up with um, regulations. Um, and so I've asked, I again, I've asked Rich that this to hang in here for this part of the discussion as well. Um, to to talk about what the implications are of someone being issued um, a determination that their use is allowed. And then a year, a year and a half later, the zoning, planning and zoning commission developing regulations, um, that I maybe they're not allowed anymore or or that there's big restrictions placed on them.
Is that my cue?
Yes, it is.
Um, well, first, uh, you know, I I I I started looking at this basically yesterday, so um, my comments will be pretty general. And uh, based upon what I what I'm familiar with, um, the a- at this point, you have a the zoning official has ruled that a the the data center, at least the one that was presented to him a a year ago, it falls uh, under the use of the telecommunications facility. So it's a when the telecommunications facility is a permitted use that this falls under as an umbrella, so to speak. So um, you certainly can can identify a use in your use table. And uh, you can also, you have authority to put a moratorium on certain kinds of uses. Um, the wrinkle here is that uh, if you put a moratorium on without changing the regulations first, it would affect all telecommunications facilities in the town. Uh, for those of you who are never done a moratorium before, it has to be adopted the same way you would do a reg change. So it has to be public hearings and it has to be only for a period of time that is reasonable to be able to identify the um, you know, what to do and to make some final decisions. So it's not a permanent. And courts usually don't like to see them go past a year. Um, if you were to prohibit a use at the end of your examination, um, and there were a challenge to that legally, as lawyer, what I would look to see and to support your decision would be what kind of administrative findings you made that's based that are based upon evidence. So for example, um, I'd wanna see, I'd hope that that if you adopted a regulation or prohibition, I'd wanna see in the administrative record uh, some sort of scientific studies as to why you did this, something to to justify your reasoning. They could, courts don't usually like to see things be arbitrary. That's a general background.
Why is a data center a telecommunications?
Yeah, right.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, I I all I can tell you, yeah, all I can answer is that the zoning official ruled that 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 it was, um, and he acts as your agent. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everybody's speaking at the same time.
Go ahead, Joe.
No, I mean, to me, a data processing has nothing to do with communications. It's processing data. It's technical information.
Well, that's not exactly true. Ha- having worked on a data center in Redwood City in California for AT&amp;T, it was part of their phone processing.
Oh, it could be. Yeah, no, I mean, it can be, but it isn't. Data processing isn't and telecommunications aren't the same.
But they but they can overlap and they certainly do.
This is a different animal.
Well, that's part of, I think it's part of the problem is that how much of a different animal is it? If this were a little data center, this were a, you know, five megawatt data center that we could power easily and would be up there in the woods, we wouldn't have heard it or seen or smelled it. I don't think we'd have been having this discussion, but right now we don't know if it's somewhere between twenty and two hundred and fifty mega megawatts. Which means it might be twice as big as the biggest ones in the world. So I mean, literally, that's I'm not making those numbers up. So with that factor being unknown, all things are not equal depending on the scale. I looked at it and say, well, maybe it is okay if it's just like the other things we expect in that zone. So what, within that zone, what what are the similarities? What's the size? What's the scope? How many people expected? What's the traffic? What's the noise? And there's, we already have things, actually kitty cornered from it across on the other side of ninety-five that meets that exactly. It's always little buildings and have lots of different people working on it and they all go home weekends and they all don't work nights. And they don't have huge backup generators. So to the extent that it's could be the same as the one of those, I'd say maybe it's okay. Or differs from that, such as it has its own power plant as a backup. That's where I say that's not the same. In fact, we don't, power plants is clearly not one of the things that's permitted there, by the way. So if he has a power plant, a whole power plant, twenty megawatt power plant just for doing uh, load uh, peak shaving, then that part's not permitted. It's a separate thing that's not part of data processing. So we could take it apart into the size and the pieces and get into get into it that way.
I don't think we know what the size is. It could be monstrous and you have to regulate for the maximum um, possible um, size, unfortunately, because that's gonna have a big impact. And you you need at least try to get an estimate of that. And I think in looking at the regulations today and all the permitted uses, I had to smile when I saw one of the uses that is not permitted.
I had to smile when I saw one of the uses that is not permitted in this light industrial. We have to remember, this is a light industrial mixed use, was a library and that just kind of, I was like, wow, you can't have a library there, but you can have a big building just um using as much power as a large cities and everything, you know, so I think this is also new to a lot of us. That would be good to have time to really make sure we understand what the implications are. And I think we also need to say, how big should this really be? And it has to be big, apparently. So I understand, and if it is big, then what's it like, you know?
Yeah, but what big is a relative?
Can I come next?
Well, no, I mean, you can cover a lot of land there legitimately, right? Anyway, so.
Can I just, um, because I want to speak my position, sorry. Because I was I was the one who raised the issue in the last meeting. So my position i- is a little different than what we're talking about. And if y'all don't know, this is this is my business, I run for the largest silicon provider in the world. I run our federal cloud business, so I'm not saying I know the construction of a fab or a data center. I know the processing side, I'm probably the only person in Groton who's actually been in a tier four hyperscale um data center. And that's Microsoft Azure's down in Boynton, Virginia. Boynton, Virginia grew from one million square feet to eleven million square feet. You guys have never seen anything like this in my uh in your lives. So the issue is, uh, a tier four hyperscale data center needs that in order for a Google or an Apple, an AWS, a GCP, Oracle to run, that's what we do. And some of these are terrific, they're terrific neighbors, but all the planning has been done prior to accepting these type of fee agreements. We've looked at infrastructure, they look at infrastructure, they look at water, they look at terawatts, because that's what we're talking about here is terawatts. So my position was different, and it goes back to the agreement we've made with the town staff. When Three Water Street went up and members of this commission said, wait a second, you can't put that up, it's too big. But the town zoning official had made the statement and given the letter that said you could do that. And we said, anytime in the future where there is a a permitted use, whether there's a measurement that is in question, you need to come back to the planning and zoning commission. And in this particular case, they did not. I grew up in telecom, I grew up in NEC and Siemens and I grew up in all these like how. I grew up in the telecommunications cross connect centers, there's not, there is no relation. There is no relation, a slight overlap potentially in the same site, there is no relation between the two of them. There's not anyone in the world who could argue me off that point because I live in that every single day. They're just not, and so my point is to articulate, and I find, by the way, the zoning official to be a very responsible person, but the process was irresponsible because we said you need to come back before you make that decision. So what I'd like to see tonight, if which, thank you, Rich, for articulating the legal position on this. I think we need to to ask the zoning official to vacate that decision. We basically vote that he needs to vacate that decision based on the process that we have spoken about between the commission and the 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 town. That's the decision we made after Three Water Street, and this is again against that type of decision. So that's my, that's my position on this.
Or do we just take the position uh the regulations where they're proposing this one uh near the sheep sheep farm? It says it's low to moderate impact industrial and light industrial uses which may benefit from proximity to mixed use as residential, I mean, this doesn't meet that requirement.
Does not.
We're talking about this huge power plant.
Mr. Chairman.
Not allowed in that area by this definition.
The our uh attorney Cody said that uh that any a moratorium on telecommunication would be on all telecommunication, but couldn't we just do a moratorium on new tell them communication?
It it's not, I I don't think this thing is allowed by the fact they have to have this backup power. You know, your power plant, basically, you're putting a power plant in here.
It's possible any telecommunications center would benefit from location, this is not.
Yeah, it's particularly, we're talking about this particular application.
Hmm, that's all, that's right.
Well, uh, on the long term, though, we need to, I, you know, data centers are not identified in our regulations. And there are a lot of issues that address those that aren't identified in our regulations and regardless of anything else, uh, we need to have those regulations in place before an application is submitted.
Right, so we need to.
I mean, just our sound ordinance is two sentences. Our sound ordinance is two sentences and.
Or put in a data center, just put it in now and just say it's not allowed.
Yep. But I like Kevin's idea of having the zoning enforcement officer vacate his decision. Um, let me just tell you, I was curious about, is this normal for zoning enforcement officers? It's it's almost like being the pope of the zoning regulations. You can make these pronouncements that are the law supposedly, or they sound like they're the law way before the public gets to be involved, before the commission gets to look at things. And to me, it's like, is that really how it's supposed to be? And I pulled up a job description, it was a CCOG zoning enforcement officer. It said duties will include receiving and investigating zoning violation complaints, issuing notices of violation and so on and so forth, season desus and all. But it's very much after something has happened. This doing it before a commission, especially commission of impartial, it's volunteers, um, gets to go and look at the regulations and discuss and decide what we want to do. I think it was really play the cart before the horse, so.
Well, Susan, uh, I can interject as being the the town zoning enforcement officer. As a zoning enforcement officer specifically is separate from being a zona zoning official. And Pete Zingleth is the zoning official. So the the two jobs are not the same description.
No, that's okay, my apologies, I mean, no disrespect or anything for you two gentlemen. But I just say, I think as a process, I have some real questions about the order of these things and the ability of some person to really override the zoning and or plan and zoning commission before we even have a chance to meet, let alone have the public give input to.
Right, and we agree that wouldn't take place?
I think Rich can speak to the legalities of the the job of the zoning official.
Yeah, I take the fact, but Kevin said we agreed that wasn't gonna happen to.
Well, you 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 have to examine your own regulations, um. I mean, that's that's where a a judge or a lawyer is going to go to determine whether or not a a certain person who's designated as your agent has legal authority to make these determinations. And if you go to section one point two, it's clear that the zoning official has the authority to interpret the regulations, so they have the organic ability to do that and to explain that to the ordinary marketplace, to the real estate marketplace. Um, and upon which the uh the marketplace will rely. And in later on in your section four point four dash two, I guess, uh, the zoning officials given the express authority to to uh take a use that's being proposed and categorize it or loop it into an existing use that's listed in the table of permitted uses. Probably that was decided upon for purposes of flexibility and the fact that that people come to the town offices with zoning permits on a regular basis daily. And the commission might have met once, once a month when this regulation was adopted. So there was some facility to it, I'm assuming, uh, was was the background. Uh, and and lastly, the zoning official acts as your agent. Um, and that's in your regulations too, so with respect to with respect to trying to reverse, with respect to trying to trying to reverse a decision, um, one of the problems you may have is that when 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 a letter is issued to a particular property owner uh saying that this is a legal use within a zone and that property owner relies upon that and goes forward with the transaction. Um, and then you change the rules or you miss or you reinterpret the rules anyway. Um, it it it, the property owner would have what's called an estoppel claim. It would claim the the town's changing its position and uh probably would be continued, allowed to continue with the project by a judge.
Oh.
So those are, those are some background principles.
I I find that hard to believe that one person can have such power and that that's the way, I don't see that happening in, as I have before, I know, other than the Three Water Street, of course. And it would have been, I I guess what I would really wish, um, this is the first time I've even heard zoning, I mean, Mr. um, Zappari. It'd be nice if he worked with us more too, if there are issues like that, let's talk about. You know, I mean, that's, I would think if he's really such an agent, support, all that sort of thing, why isn't he in here? And all my years on the zoning commission, he wasn't there, so. Anyway, but that's enough of this, let's move on and see where we want to go with this.
Well, what do we, you know, what do we want to do with this?
Hmm.
Just let it lie or? I mean, it it's what, I guess, the definition of what a data center is. Does that include everything? Does it include the backup power supply or are we talking a data center just the equipment to process the data?
I think it's so, I'd like a moratorium myself, just to give some time, not a long moratorium, but just enough so we can decide what we want to do.
How many other uh telecommunications uh businesses are there? And when someone makes application, is that how they are absolutely defined?
Um, I, yeah.
Mike, could you be a little more precise with that question?
Well, I just, you know, I don't, if we did do a moratorium on telecommunications systems, I'm supposing that's what we have to do from what I'm understanding, not data centers, because that's how it was interpreted to be. What does that mean for the other telecommunications systems in the town? Can we just make it for new ones? Uh, and I don't know what.
Why not define data center as a data center? And say what it is.
Well, because the zoning official determined that they were, they fell under telecommunications.
I know that, but we add add a de- definition, just like we did with cannabis, you add the definition.
But it's after the fact at this point.
Data center.
Hmm. It's after the fact at this point, it'll be good for future data centers, but it's after the fact.
Yeah, but I don't know that this one, I don't know if this one would meet the requirement for that zoning district.
Yeah, that's right, no.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the agreement was for a data center, people talk a data center. Do they even know what it is? Or what the definition is, or who defined it?
I got a question for Rich. Um, if if a data center has been classified as a communication center and it's permitted by right, but we put in the definition like Jeff is saying, put in a definition for a data center and put explicit restrictions on it, is that considered um whatever the term is where you take from a a property owner?
Uh, well, generally speaking, you're authorized to create categories of uses. And if you were to create a use specifically for a data center and regulate it separately from other uses, it would be valid as long as uh the 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 regulation is supported by, you know, some evidence and record, uh, some some kind of scientific reason, some valid reason. Um, it it the doing that may or may not have any effect on the ruling um of this particular of of in this particular case, because that property owner uh may have relied upon the rule. Um, but you can clearly establish, uh, you know, a new use and and uh create performance standards for it.
But we'd be allowed to take this, no current application and put a noise restriction on it, can't we?
If the existing regulations for telecommunications facilities allow you to regulate noise, then yes.
Well, I don't think they identify.
But we put, we put restrictions on things all the time that currently aren't in the regulations.
Hours, right?
My life of operation.
I would have to defer to Deb on the performance standards. I don't know if it's by special permit or.
For noise, I mean, there's just a a very small section um for noise that that mimics the um the state standards.
We don't have an application in front of us.
No, we don't, we don't have an application, so that's why I think a moratorium.
But by the time we get the application, it'll be too late.
Hmm.
I I think a moratorium and then we write some regulations for telecommunications systems, whatever we decide they need to be, if that's what we're determining them to be. Uh, I don't know what effect that's gonna have if we just say a moratorium on new telecommunication businesses.
Or is this really a telecommunications business?
I mean, including data centers.
Hmm.
But but this entity, whoever they are, which is still kind of, who knows who they really are, we know who the front person is, is already proceeding based on what he heard from.
We're not saying that we're gonna prohibit them, they're just gonna be regulated.
But it doesn't matter, but it isn't regulated right now and he's been proceeding based on what there is now.
Well, telecommunications are regulated.
Okay. But that not enough to matter.
That's interesting.
We we want to regulate it some more.
But can can we say he can't use diesel generators and has to use a gas turbine?
It's in our P O C D, if we can find it in there, I would imagine that we could rely on that for a new regulation for telecommunications centers.
Because it would be sent well, or just, I mean, that's one of the problems that's is of concern is your noise level.
Our noise ordinance is uh it's two sentences, it just says night uh fifty and daytime seventy or the other way around. It it's two sentences. And the contract that they're signing, we're relying on that contract to to regulate the noise and we should be doing it.
Yeah, we can go up, we can go out and hire, I mean, we can put in to give them permission, they have to pay to let or or allow us to go get a consultant to.
It would be better, I think, if we had something a little more concrete and it was a little more thought out. And then the thing is too, it would seem like that first one that we're not even dealing with at this point, the first one that was approved back in April, the moratorium would be effective for them, I don't know if an application was made for that one yet, but.
Yeah, we don't.
All into the same, they're inconsistent. The first contract that was signed with the first data center is different than the second one and it deals with noise and uh.
The first one does?
Every, the first one was, I'm the the contract was, these contracts have been uh evolving. It it dealt with noise, it dealt with a traffic study on the on the third iteration that I'm seeing. And it dealt with no cryptocurrency can be produced there, the first one didn't have that in it. So, uh, you know, it's already like getting grandfathered in with these things that now the county council has decided they don't want these things in there. They've already got a contract with it.
Well, it's not signed anyway. Right, but who brought up the crypto, that's ridiculous, I can run crypto anywhere in a secure, you have no idea what I'm doing.
Yeah, well, that's what, it's in, it's in the last iteration of the last contract, there's no cryptocurrency can be produced here.
Okay, here's the issue, can I can I just, can I ask a legal question? And I want to answer it to where, so we have two different areas of the the Groton in Groton. There was a zoning official who believes as an agent, he had the ability to do that. You have a zoning commission that believes he did not have that over that scale of a decision to make on something that to most people in the business, they would not make that, what do you suggest that we do?
Um, I'm not sure what you mean by suggest that you do, um. I mean, uh, the zoning official made this decision perfectly legally, um, I can't find any fault in it, um, I mean, somebody might disagree with the reasoning, but he had the authority. Fault in it. I mean, somebody might disagree with the reasoning, but he had the authority to do that. So I'm not sure what you mean by, with your question. What can you legally do? If you want to change your, your, your regulations, you certainly can do that.
Right, but you're making a determination that he had the legal with, with the documents and the citations you provided tonight. He had the ability to make that decision, right?
That's right, that's right. He's authorized by your regulations. In other words, this commission is authorized him to make that, those determinations.
Right, but, okay, so when we made the agreement between ourselves and the town after Three Water Street. That they would not make those decisions without coming to the planning and zoning commission. Where does that enter into, if it does, within the legal determination you're making now?
What, what agreement is this? I am.
Yeah, I, I think this was, was a discussion that we had after Three Water Street that was, that was. Born out of the commission's uncomfortable feeling with, with the zoning, with the determination that had been made about a height. For that particular property. I, I mean, there's, there was no regulation change as part of it. And. And I think, and frankly, the zoning official has changed since that determination was, was made and, and I'm not sure. You know, to be honest, I would have to go back to the record. I don't remember whether or not. That zoning official actually was part of that discussion.
I don't think so. I don't remember anything. But we changed, we fixed it, but there was also. An issue, there was another height issue that. The person.
Having, having the zoning official have the ability to interpret the zoning regulations rather than the commission. It, it addresses, you know, the person who comes into the front counter and wants to know is that, can I do this on my property? Is this an allowed use? I mean, to, to make all of those folks have to come to a commission meeting. And, and ask those questions of this commission, really just.
But the answer is this is very different. We agree with you on that, but someone to make this type of scale, we disagree. If somebody said, I want to put a nuclear reactor in and it's a business. And we want to put it down at the, at the corner in front of the gas station. I mean, and he makes the determination. I mean, it's good. There has to be some kind of feedback that says, with the spirit of. What our regulations are and what we wrote, is it in the spirit? And not what somebody believes.
Right, I, I don't have an answer for you. I mean, the, the decisions are appealable.
But we wouldn't even know about it.
I, I know, I know.
I mean, the thing is, is that if a decision like any decision is being made, then we should be updated on that decision within two weeks.
That's what I was going to say. Let, let me see if I can come up with a procedure for that.
Fix this problem.
It, it does not. No, it doesn't. But, but going forward, because I, I mean, frankly, sometimes I'm not aware of, of the decisions that have been made or the rulings that have been made. Let me see about setting up some kind of procedure with the zoning official. And I just want to note that. Rich needs to, to leave. He's got some other items to, to get up early in the morning, so. We can continue this discussion. And maybe we can move on with the other items that I need your input on for zoning regulations.
Well, that's, what are we going to do on the data centers? Are we going to put a moratorium on these or? Because at least it would, the next, this, this current maybe application to be. For the hosting site, it could cover that one, right? At least you'd have one out of two.
Well, is the first one in the, in a different position? Has it been, is there an application for it? I don't know why this wouldn't, if we just put a, a. Moratorium on the telecommunications data center, whatever you want to call it. New ones until whatever, one year, six months, whatever it is that we decide, however long it takes, maybe we can do it in a month.
I think we should say three months maximum.
But that's where we need the attorneys, Rich's input. On what happens with the existing agreement that the town has signed.
Well, well, the agreements, you can't affect the agreement.
Oh, no, I mean, does it put us into a financial bind?
It may. I'd, I'd have to look at that. I hadn't considered it. I'll have to look at the, the agreement. What you're talking about is put in a moratorium.
Until we can define a data center where you can put it.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to look at the contract.
This is zoning. I, I'm not, you know, I don't know what, if other people made mistakes, I don't know if I'm willing to just like. Wait too long.
Understand, but I don't know if you noted, read all the part of the agreement, why our name. Shows up so much. Is there pretty specific about giving us power to change any term in the agreement?
That's true.
No, you can just make stuff up according to that way the agreement's written, which is a crazy agreement, but that's kind of what it says.
But unfortunately, you could get a. Application that would knock you off your feet and the scale of it. And the impact from the generators and all that sort of thing, much larger than has been talked about so far. Because they have a hundred and fifty acres too. That's no small piece of property. I, I think we ought to err on the side of caution. If nothing else, to protect the public and the environment in this case.
Just put them on.
Right, but we also have to balance out the empathy toward the landowner who, by. Parent direction, you know, the landlord made it, the landowner who made a clean deal, right? From that, from our point, unfortunately, we don't agree with it, but he made a clean deal. So.
Well, I don't know. So, we're, we're not in that business, you know, rightly or wrongly.
Well, and it's just a moratorium. We, we don't have to do anything. You know, it's just, we need time to look at it.
Three months, now get a stop, put a fire under things.
Well, if we're allowed a year, I wouldn't limit us.
There you go.
Just put a moratorium on it.
Till, till it's done. Maybe we'll be two months.
Yep, we'll try. I think we should.
I'm willing to do the work.
So, so a, a moratorium, as, as Rich had mentioned, I mean, you have to have an end date to it. It's also approved the same way a regulation amendment is, is approved. And as you guys know, that's a multi-month process. So putting, putting a moratorium in place for two months means the next day, we're going to have to. Apply to extend it because we're not going to be able to get regulations in place that quickly.
Six months?
It's six months to, to a year. Yeah, exactly.
And maybe that will get the council. Council's awareness that they shouldn't be playing around with.
And, and it needs to be for a specific reason. I mean, it needs to be. It needs to be for a reason, you know, to develop regulation. Right, it just can't be. You know, we just don't want to deal with it right now.
Can we proceed with that?
Well, we'd have to vote on it, wouldn't we?
No, what, to get? No, we.
No, it's, it's, it's an application. It's a public hearing.
So we need the text to vote on.
We don't have to vote for you to go ahead and do that. Okay.
She can prepare the text and.
Okay. Very good.
Why does it take two months?
No, it's, it's because, you know, you have to apply, right? You have to do.
Put it into an, in effect would take. Because it has to, we'd have to, you have to advertise it. It's a zoning change, basically.
Zoning refinement.
Right, no, no, I understand, yes.
Then the time starts when that is.
When that.
Completed.
Right.
I, I'm not sure what you mean the time starts.
That if we decided that it was going to be a three-month period or a six-month period, it would start from that day which it was approved.
No, from the effective date.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there's quite a few issues that we need to update our regulations to address. That they don't address. Clearly.
Noise for one.
And pollution.
Because that's. I'll be happy to work with Deb and if you want me to look at some language, Deb will be happy to look at that. Help you with the procedure. In the meantime, I'll take a look at the contract and see if there's anything I spotted in it.
We'd appreciate that, Rich. And you need some definitions on, because I work every day, twelve hours every single day. And I'd love to be able to show some distinctions. For instance, say that Pfizer wanted to put in a small data center. Well, great, that's part of their business, right? That's within their footprint. To make sure we don't exclude something as even Rich is bringing up on a new telecom vendor like Verizon, who needs to cross-connect in town, right? So, if you need help, I know the definition is fairly well. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, nice to see everybody.
Have an expert.
Accessory. Accessory dwelling units is our next, I don't know.
Right, accessory dwelling units. As we discussed at the last, the last time we were talking about zoning regulations. That the state. Has now, it, it says that every, every town has to have accessory dwelling units. And of course, Groton has allowed them since the early nineties. However, there are a couple of. Of differences between what the state is allowing and, and what Groton has. And I've, I've listed those out here. So what I need to know from you folks is. Are you comfortable with what the state is now requiring towns to allow? Or do you want to opt out? There's a deadline of January first, twenty twenty-three to do the opt-out. So I've listed the, the three things that are different from our regulations versus the state. We require, one is parking. The state said that you can't require any more than one parking stall for the accessory dwelling unit. We base parking on, on the number of bedrooms. And occasionally we'll see an accessory dwelling unit that has more than one bedroom. The state says that the A D U must be at least a thousand square feet. Or thirty percent of the size of the primary structure. Our regulations just say eight, it's a maximum of eight hundred square feet. And then they also note that you can regulate these as short-term rentals and prohibit them from being used as short-term rentals. So what I need from you folks is, are you comfortable allowing a larger A D U here? And let's park one parking stall for it? Or are, would you prefer to just continue on with the regulations that we have written now?
So, so I will throw in.
Excuse me.
Either we either accept the state or opt out is.
That, that's, that's pretty much it. That's right. And if, if you want to opt out, it's a process with public, a public hearing. And then it also has to go to the town council for recognition that we've opted out. We can not do anything and then the state regs become effective January first, twenty twenty-three. I just need to know which way you guys want to go.
So why don't we just go down our list and see who wants, which ones you want, whether you want to opt out or.
Chairman, before we do that, Deb, do you have an opinion on what we should do?
Do I have an opinion? I, I don't see any, any problem with, with adopting what the state has, has passed. I mean, an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit is pretty small. And I've talked with some folks who truly, truly are. Wanting to use them for relatives to live. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge to design a structure that's eight hundred. At least that's what I've heard from some folks. I, I don't have a problem going to a thousand square feet.
Got it, thank you.
Well, if we opt, if. If we don't opt out, is this, when we are always required to meet the, whatever the state, if they change these rules? Do we have to change what we do then?
Um, you know what, if, if they adopt something new in the future, I would imagine there would still be another opt-out. It wouldn't be retroactive. It's just. This particular.
Can't change the regulations.
No, 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 no.
Okay, that, that would be my only concern is that if we opt out, then we control our own destiny, but.
No, I mean, and if, if you decide that you don't want to opt out, I'd still like to change the regulations to, to reflect. You know, the, the larger square footage and the parking requirements.
But that, that's just a routine.
It, oh yeah, yeah.
Why don't we, I'll just call, go down the, the voting members here. Mike, what?
Well, I don't, you know, I don't know, it's, I really haven't thought about this a lot. But the maximum eight hundred square feet. There were a lot of houses that were built after World War Two that were twenty-six by twenty-six. You know, you're looking at like six hundred and twenty-five square feet, something like that. That served people really well for a long time. So I don't. Know as if, for an accessory building, how big they have to be. I think that we're living in a world now where eight hundred square feet isn't a very big house, but there sure are a lot of them out there. So that's my only thought on that. And then as far as prohibiting them for S T Rs, what, could you repeat yourself, Deb?
Or the, the legislation allows the commissions to prohibit them from being used as short-term rentals.
Okay, so that is in contrast to what Ledger did. Ledger is, I believe, making. Accessory buildings available for short-term rentals. So long as the main house is owner occupied. So if we have any thoughts of doing that, would that be a conflict with that?
No, no, no. This is, this, this allows you to regulate it if you want to.
Oh, okay.
But this. The way you have it here, the A D says the state requirement is a minimum of a thousand square feet.
Right.
And not a max, but a minimum. And we have a max. We don't have a minimum, ours is a maximum.
Hang on, let me just wait a minute.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, 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 yep.
Are you sure it's that and it isn't?
No, I'm not. I'm just looking right now.
I think it must be.
Yeah, because a minimum, one thousand square foot house is pretty.
Yeah, it's maximum. I'm sorry.
Maximum. That's what I thought it should be. And then I was looking at it and says, wait.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'd be changing the, the maximum from eight hundred to a thousand, allowing two hundred, you know.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be a thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, alright. So, Mike. Mike, what are your feelings?
Well, I guess, at that, I would say, if it is a thousand, I wouldn't want it to ever be bigger than the main house.
No, no, it's a max of that, no, it's a maximum. You can't. Can't exceed a thousand. Square feet or thirty percent of the size of the primary.
So then that's, 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 that's okay. Yeah, I'm all right with that. And so long as the accessory, short-term rental. Someone else go.
No, I'm just saying, do we want to opt, try to opt out or not opt out is really what we're saying here.
Yeah, I don't think that, from what I'm hearing, listening to myself. I would say that we, we could just leave it the way it is. Go with the state, do not opt out.
Okay, that's all.
But I could be swayed.
What are your thoughts on this?
I, I, I'd say go with the state. In fact, I, I like the, the second one better than ours. And actually, because it's whichever is smaller, so the A D U may be, it may be. Maximum, actually a thousand square feet, so keeps it small. Or thirty percent of the size of the primary structure. So if you have a twelve hundred square foot primary structure. You can only put up a little house, which I think is appropriate if you're going to keep the nature of neighborhoods the same. This is, that's a nice little statement in there.
Yeah, I agree. Go with the state.
Hey, okay, so.
Yeah, I agree. It's so funny. I thought, oh no, but once Deb clarified it. Yeah, I agree, it's so funny, I thought, oh, no, but once Deb clarified it, it, since people want a thousand, that makes sense to go with the state.
And I go with the state, so we'll go with the state then.
Okay, okay. So, um, we will probably change our regulations to make, so that it's not confusing to people.
But you can do that on a routine basis.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll, we'll combine that with some other, uh, zoning text amendment that we're doing.
And cannabis, you're working on that.
We're working on that and then, we're working on. Parking and, and bicycle storage, and so we probably can combine some of these, like accessory dwelling units and parking and bicycle storage into one. Text amendment, um. And then we have a, a very long list of things that just need to be cleaned up, you know, uh, references that are wrong or. Or, um, words that weren't right, and we'll, we'll do those routine ones, we'll tack some of those on as well.
Okay. And we've had enough discussion on the first, go on for a while. All right, uh, new business, new applications, you have Groton Pump Track.
Yep.
What is that? I saw something in the paper and it was in an ad or something on.
Uh, it's, um, it's a bicycle course.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Sounds good idea to me.
Yeah. No, I ju, I remember seeing something, there was something in the paper, legal ad or something on that. And referrals, we have Central Hall Carports, which we have, uh. Drawings, we have a referral from, uh, Z B A for that.
This is, um, actually an application that you saw maybe eight months ago. Or some carports that will be associated with Central Hall. Um, the Z B A actually denied the last application and this is a new one. Um, just to remind you, um, when you reviewed the last application. You had concerns with constructions along the lot line, construction along the lot line without agreement with the adjacent property owner. And, um, concerns with drainage of, of rainwater coming off the roof of these things.
And then, what, what changed from the previous?
Um, they will be getting, um. They have expressed to staff at any rate that they will have an agreement with the property owner, the adjacent property owner. I, I don't believe we have that in hand yet.
But that's what they.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when they go to Z B A, they'll say they have that.
That's, that's right.
Okay. Now, that's the only change.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's essentially the same application.
Okay, does anyone have any?
They have also changed the, um, uh, the variance request on the north side, uh, they've taken away that, so it's only on the east and west side.
Thanks, Tom.
Does anyone have any, uh, concerns with this item? If not, so we have, we don't have to respond it, right, we just have to, we have no input then on that. Okay, commission reports, reported chair, they don't have anything. Else to report, does anyone on the commission have anything to report?
I just have a question about the Handel's Furniture Rama, or whatever it's called, Handel's, uh, I, I don't know what it was.
Furniture Rama.
Uh, sorry, Handel's, uh, on Route twelve.
Lazy boy.
Lazy boy, I've always referred to everything what it was a hundred years ago.
Well, they changed.
They're doing a lot of work there, I'm just wondering, we, I don't think, did we see that?
Oh, yeah, yes, you did, yes, you did.
Is this gonna make the connection to Wendy's?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good, okay. All right, that's it. Uh, how, how, I got one other question, if a, someone were to have a short-term rental as a boat. Do we regulate that?
Um, we've, we would regulate the landward side of it.
The dock.
Or the parking.
So what would set, what would stop someone from bringing in the Queen Mary?
Yeah.
It doesn't fit.
It's, you'd have to dredge the channel.
Yeah, we stayed in, we, I stayed in, uh, in, I think it was the Queen Mary. In, uh, somewhere out, I think it was in Washington or somewhere.
It was Long Beach.
California, Long Beach, yeah.
Yep.
Well, they did have the, the steamboat used to have that big yacht tied up to the dock there.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm like, looking at these short-term, with, just so that it would just be on the land side, we'd regulate.
So, so parking, right? I mean, you'd be, yeah.
The D E P or the Coast Guard.
Right.
That's jurisdiction on the wet side.
And people do use boats for short-term rentals, I mean, that's kind of the way it works, you can rent them for a week or a week at a time and live on them.
It's called a charter.
It's called a charter, right, comes with a skipper or not, whatever you like.
Oh, charter, charter the boat, hmm, those are legal, well, usually they take them away from the docks. Any, anybody else have anything? Report as staff.
No, I don't have anything.
Except our live meeting next.
Yeah, oh, that's right, thank you, that's right, we are all back in person, um, starting in April. So there will be a, a hybrid component of it, but, um, you know, staff will be there and imagine the commission and the public. And not looking.
You can't, can't eat dinner at the meeting anymore.
All right.
Paul's pasta tonight.
What did you have, pasta?
What, I, a chicken parmesan. Thank you very much.
I'm jealous of that.
It's second day, Michael.
So we have the A S P report and application update, any other comments, uh, Deb?
No.
Hmm, we've had enough for the evening. Okay, nobody has any.
I have a question.
Yes.
On, on the application, the, um, outdoor patio at Four Pearl Street.
Right.
Uh. Can you tell me more about that?
I can, um, so that is the outdoor patio associated with the Harp and Hound.
Right.
Okay, um.
Now, the patio is the parking space?
That, that's right, that's right, the executive order allowing outdoor patios is set to, um, expire at the end of the month, however. State legislature is now, I think the House has actually passed an extension till next year and the Senate will be voting on it later on this week. So it's entirely possible this, this application will be withdrawn. Because the state is going to allow these outdoor patios for another year.
In downtown Mystic where there's no parking.
Anywhere, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have anything else? If not, uh, make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Is there a second? For, for very little on the agenda, it took a long time.
All right, thanks, everyone, and we'll.
Not all.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.